Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of February 9th, 2021. At this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Krista. All in favor?
Aye.
Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Hold on a minute, Ms. Allen. Thank you. I would like to thank EB Cam as always for their diligence in making sure that our meeting is recorded and televised. Thank you EB Cam. And our first agenda item tonight is a report from the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Advisor Council.
Hi.
Council member. How are you here?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Free out for us.
So Triumph is planning their Relay for Life. That's going to be sometime this spring. The class of 2021 is doing a fundraiser basket. You can reach out to Mr. Ferrioli to learn how to get tickets. The Foreign Language Honor Society is planning its online induction for the end of February. And because that we couldn't have a freshman dinner at the beginning of the year like we used to, the Student Senate is putting together a video for freshmen that involves all of the clubs in the high school so that they can watch it and learn how to get involved.
That's a good idea.
Karen, I know we asked at the last meeting about the Relay for Life. Is there still any word about whether that's an in-person event or how is that gonna work this year?
I think that they're shooting for later in the spring, possibly June, so that they can get the possibility of doing something in person, but nothing is confirmed yet.
It's a wonderful event. I hope they get a chance to do it the way they traditionally have.
Thank you. Next agenda item is report of the update from the Budget Subcommittee. So the Budget Subcommittee comprised of Mrs. Pennington and myself met prior to the full meeting tonight. Mr. Shea, do you want to?
He's out in the audience. I figured you were just gonna go through it and then he's gonna come up. He's gonna talk after.
That's fine.
He has something for you.
We went through the proposed budget for FY '22 and, you know, there is, you know, fully recognizing that the town has restraints this year that are more considerable than in previous years due to lost revenue. They've asked us to come through at level funded, on level staff, excuse me. So we have put together a budget that, you know, takes into account different special education needs that we've had. And this year, we've had some different placements than we have in our current budget, different needs in different schools. So we have moved a couple of positions from one school to another, but has come in at 1.5% of an increase from this year's fiscal year budget. So, you know, we went through it. John did a great job answering questions. I think our district, we've done a lot of work over the last years to position ourselves so that being able to meet the lane and track changes this year did not cripple our ability to also provide other needs for the district. So it, you know, is a budget that is thoughtful for what the district needs, in line with what the town is asking us to provide, and continues to grow the district, I think appropriately, given our economic situation right now. We did have conversations about the potential for federal stimulus money to come in, which is going to be voted on in the next month. You know, we don't have any real guidance yet on how that's going to be distributed, but there is a possibility of more support from the federal government. So should that come through, we'll be able to take a step back and figure out how that's going to be appropriately deployed in the district. We had ESSR money, Phase 2, to come through that we can use in fiscal year '23, sorry, yeah, '23 and '24 to help with COVID expenses. So should there be new needs that arise, whether it's social, emotional, closing gaps in education, we have a pot of money that we can dedicate towards those needs in the upcoming two fiscal years. So I think, you know, we talk a lot about unfunded mandates, and I think, you know, that there is clearly been some thought at a state and federal level on how to meet schools' needs in the upcoming few years. I'm hoping that federal stimulus bill, if it goes through, will help us even more. We did vote to approve the proposed budget as a subcommittee, and we'll move it next month to the full committee for a presentation and for a vote at that time.
All right. Discussion. So at this point, we're going to move towards discussing the reopening ideas, plans for all three schools. We did vote at the last meeting to begin work on reopening the Central School for March 1st. I know we'll have questions about that. We got a lot of parent feedback via email and a few phone calls with specific questions that, in fairness, I don't think we knew the answers to at that time. So as, you know, plans are made and become more clear, I think we can probably identify a lot more now than we could a week ago. But I'm interested to hear how we go forward with that, those answers, and talking about the other two schools as well. Did you want us to move down there?
Not yet.
Okay.
So I'm gonna begin this evening, and Karen, Mrs. Clifford and I are going to just give you just an overview of what we know at this time about some timelines, working with the local Board of Health and working with the state DPH, also talking about transportation, some things that the principals do not have at their fingertips as we do at the district line, and we then let them know. And they have worked diligently since, I know that everybody thinks that these plans are coming out on a daily basis and that we're just, you know, thinking of something and putting them on a piece of paper and then putting them out. That's not how it goes. We started back in December. We created our first one. We came out, we said this would be our plan. We'll start at six feet, go to four and a half. You brought that up last week and said, "Let's revisit that," and we did. And then we have other people saying, "Well, keep going because we want to get the kids back in." So then, we kept, we continued to move forward and progressively trying to get, we worked on our at-risk students, whether they have an IEP or did not have an IEP. We got many students in at six feet. We're now at that turning point where schools are starting to reopen, and the vaccination is starting to become available. However, today, we did receive from our local Board of Health, it came from the State Department of Health, as you may understand and you have heard on the TV, but I get emails. And I do check my emails regularly, all the time, and so does Karen. We get these on a minute-to-minute basis. These are coming in as fast, as fast as the questions and the emails that we're receiving. This came in at 12:04 PM. Nope, that one, this one came in at, if I have it, this one at 4:19 PM. And this was about, "East Bridgewater has not received all of their vaccinations for these 75 years or plus." That puts us back. At that time, Dr. Williams and I had not heard this at that time. At 3 o'clock, we had a meeting with Mrs. Clifford, Dr. Williams and I. We still had not had this information. However, Dr. Williams and I had a conversation going into the weekend, and I think Sunday, prior to, prior up to 10 minutes before maybe the Super Bowl began, or an hour before the Super Bowl began, maybe 10 minutes between Dr. Williams and Mrs. Byrne that the Super Bowl began, that maybe we should work on our timeline and really hone down on it and when that timeline should begin. We all want tomorrow to begin full in person. There's not a question in my mind that every district, in every state, especially here in the Commonwealth, that everybody wants their child to go full in person. I don't think that's, you know, if we were safe and people felt safe, that everybody would want to be full in person regardless whether you go to a public school, a charter school, a private school, a vocational school. People want, parents want their children back, and kids want to be back with their friends. Social, emotional, we're saying that is running very deep in our children's social, emotional Because the vaccinations are late and are slow to get to East Bridgewater for our thought process, and hopefully, this will turn around tomorrow, and maybe they'll hear us tonight, and the governor will see it and send a whole bunch here to East Bridgewater and say, "Hey, help that East Bridgewater town out," which I would hope that it would happen. However, I think with the forethought of our principals, Dr. Williams, myself, Karen, from Thursday and Friday of last week and after our meetings with you, we pushed, we pushed our timeline back. Not by weeks, not by days, maybe a week. And you will see that this evening. And that we just ask you to listen to the presentations from Mrs. Byrne, Mr. Gentile, and Mr. Sylvia. They have worked with their teams. Dr. Williams will go over who they worked with and how long they worked with, and what are some of the accommodations that will be made. But this is real. This is real time from the people who are working with COVID response, from the COVID officer to the local Department of Health to the State Department of Health. These are real live numbers, and we need to adapt as we go. So there were some emails that I did see this afternoon and saw all last week and over the weekend, and we read one right up until, I don't, I don't know, half an hour ago, Gina and I. We know that things are moving rapidly. I can't, I can't stop the movement, that things are changing at a rapid time span. It's just, it's quick. It's minute by minute, it could be day by day. You know, Mrs. Pennington walked into the Budget Subcommittee and said, "Did you hear on the news today? The President's going to release more funds for public education." Yes, we did hear that. The Commissioner has called a meeting. We know that's coming. When is it going to be here? How much is East Bridgewater going to get? What can we allocate those funds for? When can we get those funds? What can we do? How many more teachers can we get? What can the computers look like? What kind of technology do we have? How many social workers can we get? What are the psychologists? Can we get them here quicker tomorrow, yesterday, next week? Those are all questions that we're waiting for and we need to get to, and I know that everybody wants answers. We want answers. We ask Karen daily, what's happening? Where are we at? I look at it from the community, yes, we're red. I understand that in the community, and I hear that. But when you come inside the schools, we are still, Karen's gonna go over that, we're still doing very well. Our kids are wearing their masks. They want to be here. Our teachers are doing what we're asking. The PPEs are here. Everyone is acting appropriately and dedicated to one thing, keeping kids active and engaged in their learning environment. That's who I am, that's who my staff is, and that's who we should be as we move forward to get kids back. At 4:04 PM, I reached out to the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner, his right-hand staffer, Ladami, they are taking texts and emails as they come in and getting back to us. I want to thank the Commissioner for that. I wrote to him and said, "I want to bring our students back in East Bridgewater. I want to bring them back by the first weeks in March. I need help with transportation." Within minutes, I guess that was probably at 2 or 1, and we received the updated guidance, the updated guidance. We're currently working with our health experts on updating the guidance. We don't have a specific timeline, but the release will be coming soon, and we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you sooner rather than later. They are responding, and they're going as quickly as they can. I wish that I could give you cement numbers, a timeline, but I can't. And I just want our parents to know, if I had that crystal ball, if I had that magic timeline, I would give it. Please, don't think that we are shaking up a bunch of dice and throwing them on the table and saying, "Okay, today, we're gonna try this, and tomorrow, let's do this," and, "Whoa, Yahtzee!" It doesn't work like that. We are doing the best that we can, and not to make light of, I've heard this old adage a thousand times, or maybe a million times this year, we're building an airplane while we're flying it. Someone mentioned to me about remote education. No one ever thought we would be remote from March 13th to now, and we are. We're almost on a year of being remote, and no one ever thought that. But what we have learned is that the human touch is much more important than what we ever imagined it would be in public education. Our children need it, and our teachers need it, and so do our families at home. So that being said, I know that there's a lot on the agenda tonight, but I just want our parents to know, we are working with them, we're gonna get them on the buses, we have, we are in contact with Lucini Bus Lines. We are in contact with Lucini. We will make adaptations as we move closer to the times that we need to put kids on buses, whether it means an additional bus, or it means on allocations of different ways of picking children up. We're going to do what we need to do. That has come out to be one of our, if any, issue. That's one of them. I've asked the principals, and the principals, Dr. Williams will bring it up, but that's something we just ask everybody, just hold on. Transportation will come. Just give us a little time to get in the movement. But Karen, if you want to just update us on some numbers, and we'll get moving.
Okay. So the numbers, we did a survey of the district staff and the numbers of the individual staff members, including custodians, cafeteria workers, everybody that's employed by the district. The number of people that would take the vaccine is 262. 21 are declining. So that's that update. I also pulled together numbers, which is on the website of the East Bridgewater Community Tracking. I know the superintendent has mentioned, "We are not the community," but the community itself, in January, January 7th was at 10.12%, and currently, right now, is at 8.98%. So it does appear that we are making that curve in the community. And I say that before February vacation, so. We'll see next week if there's any Super Bowl priorities that we need to worry about, or if the vacation is gonna be a problem. The pool testing update. The nurses have completed all of their testing modules to begin the pool testing. We have ordered and received the By Next Now tests, which are the ones that are used for the follow-up testing. One nurse from each building, another building administrator, and myself will be going to Watertown Middle School tomorrow to observe their testing, which they have been doing since September. So I feel like we would learn a lot, be able to get a lot of those logistical questions answered as we prepare to then sit down and create our building plans. I know that the superintendents did a survey amongst themselves, the Lighthouse superintendents. Some are just doing staff, some are doing, some are starting off slower, some are, as they wait for permission slips and consent forms to come in, they're just doing it at a different speed. So the parent and staff consent forms are being prepared for distribution with our partnering lab, and at this point, we're tentatively looking at the pool testing to begin after vacation. The actual date will be dependent on the participation in consent forms. Any questions on that? I'll have more.
Karen, I'd be interested when you go tomorrow. Where are you going to, Middle School?
Watertown Middle School, yeah.
Are they doing it at their elementary too, do you know?
I think they're doing it at all buildings, and they have been since September.
I'd just be curious about how the self-administration, I guess that's the right word, is going, especially with the younger ones?
So the self-administration is for grades two and up?
Don't seem to mix good.
I'm sorry?
Q-tip, six-year-old, no's, don't really sound like a good blend, so I'd be curious how they're doing.
So it's not as invasive as the other PCR test, but the middle school would be the age group that is self-administering, not the elementary.
Okay, 'cause the pamphlet says two, grade two and up.
Yeah.
I was just curious of what we were thinking.
Our elementary school, I would work with the building administrator as well as the nurses, staff on that, because why allow one group, I don't know, if that would be the choice to let one grade do it by themselves, or just do the whole building in one format? So there are some new CDC quarantine guidelines that were effective in the middle of December that we held off on because of coming up to the break. This is something that I have discussed with the admin team a couple of times. For close contacts, it's a seven, 10, 14 rule. So for a close contact, if you're asymptomatic, you can test on day five to seven and return on day eight with a negative PCR. Or you cannot test, and if you remain asymptomatic for 10 days, you can return on day 11. If at any point, you develop symptoms, so you have to, the contingency is that you have to self-monitor your own symptoms after day eight up to day 14, or after day 11 up to 14. And if you're asymptomatic at any point, you have to complete the remainder of the 14-day quarantine. So we have not moved forward with this at this time, and one of the reasons being is because we're starting, we wanted to start the pool testing or explore that. We don't want the data to be skewed if we are either catching asymptomatic students with the pools, with the pool testing, or are we increasing the risk because of the shortened quarantine. So we wanted to kind of keep that data clean, but I wanted to bring it up because we get a lot of questions about that, something that a lot of the towns in our area are doing. We're one of the few towns that are not doing it yet. So I guess that could be discussed, thought about.
Can you say it again, Karen? So asymptomatic, you can test at day five, if you get a negative PCR.
It only considers close contacts.
Right.
Which we have a number of close contacts. And that's where the quarantine comes in, and the quarantine does work. So what they're doing is they're reducing that quarantine for close contact, that if you're asymptomatic, you can test on day five, six, or seven, and get your results back, and then you can return to school or work on day eight.
And it's a PCR, not a rapid, right?
Or you can choose not to test, and if you remain asymptomatic in your quarantine after day 10, you can come, return on day 11.
Okay. That's what I missed.
And if at any, and you still have to self-monitor up to the 14 days in both situations, and if at any point you get symptoms, you have to then complete the remainder of the 14-day quarantine. So one of the things with the pool testing is we have these By Next Now tests, which is a PCR test, which is read in the office, which takes 15 minutes. So when we have a pool come back positive, that pool is contacted, they come back, we administer this By Next Now test, interpret it, and let them know. So that does not have to go to a lab. So that does not have that two- or three-day turnaround. So one of the benefits of having those on the premises is that we could do testing for, and some districts are doing this, they're determining to just do the pool testing for everybody, the whole building. Some of them are just doing the close contacts and asymptomatic, asymptomatic people. Does that make sense? So we could, I think that we can do any combination of that. I think we could do the pool testing weekly, and then if somebody comes up as a close contact somewhere else, they could come in on day five to seven, and we could do this test and help them. Because we would interpret it instead of waiting the two to three days.
And if you get a positive, don't you have to do another test? Are both those tests done here? I mean, I know they're done here, but are they read here?
The pool testing, it goes to the lab, and the lab will identify to us what pool came back positive. We do the follow-up testing with this other By Next Now test, it's called, and we interpret that. The nurses will interpret that.
So we interpret if a pool comes back positive. The lab does the pool?
The lab does the pool and tells us, "This pool is positive." So if we were all in one pool, you would all be called, and we would all have to come back and do this other test.
Okay.
Which has to be administered. That cannot be self-administered.
So I missed that part earlier. So any student that becomes a close contact, the school can now be the testing site for them when they need a COVID test as a close contact?
Yes, we can use the By Next Now test in that way.
Whether or not it's in school or out of school where the close contact is created.
Yeah.
That takes a huge burden off parents trying to find testing sites and slots.
And that's why many of us would like to move, if not, many have moved.
Yeah.
We're one of, you know, we've been continuing to bring it slowly because we went up a little bit, but I think it's something that we should move to do. I think it would take some burden off of our parents. I think that with the new pool testing, we're in, you know, we've got this opportunity to start this, and the nurses have been working with Karen. I know tomorrow, I think, they're going with Karen, and I think Mrs. Nichols
Yes.
is going to Watertown. It, I mean, we're doing everything, I think, that you need to do to be proactive to this, and try to just be solutionary and just say, "We can do this. We can get it done, and we ask for you that we move to this."
That aspect shouldn't be understated, because I know firsthand how frustrating it is to need a test for your child and, you know, running around from, you know, urgent care to urgent care, trying to get doctor visits to get a test in. It's no small feat.
So the pool testing is a mitigating factor that helps, like with the mask, with the social distancing, with all of those things. So if we systematically do the whole, whole district once a week, then we're catching asymptomatic sooner, or we're catching the students with the smaller amount of symptoms before they really infect a number of people. The thing is, is that people are close contacts from outside of the school, that it may occur in a weekend, and that, and then we're gonna get somebody that says, "I'm keeping my child home." They were a close exposure, which is perfect. It's what we want them to do. And then what would happen is that they could come in on day five to seven. A lot of schools have set that up. A lot of districts have set that up at one site in the district, and it's a drive-through, like a CVS. So you would drive up between the hours of 12 and 2, the nurse would run out, administer the test, you wait 15 minutes, and then you get to leave.
Great. Mrs. Pennington, you had a question?
Oh, I think she just answered it. For people that are, have an exposure, are waiting until day five to seven and then coming in for the pool test?
And then coming into the pool?
Yes.
No, then they would come in and do this, this other follow-up test.
Oh, okay. But, so I guess, well, then my question was, if someone's exposed, like they have a direct exposure, they still have to wait between five and seven days before they actually get tested, or you just might not catch them if they're in the pool?
You have to wait the five days, no matter what.
That's a minimal. And Karen, if we, if we took over that piece of the testing, wouldn't that further ensure that they're waiting the five days? Or do you have control over that anyway? Like, do you get notified of all the close contacts, whether they happened in school or out of school, or you do?
Yes. If it's a school-aged child, so not
Right.
not adults. But that's something that other districts have done too, is that they have opened up this drive-through, follow-up testing for close contacts to anybody in the community. So if it, if it's in a family's house, that the whole family could come and get tested, it would not just be the one child. So there's a lot of opportunities for us, and we just have to figure out how, how to implement, what order, and which way we want to go. And I think seeing Watertown tomorrow in action will help us.
Yeah, I think caring about that will be key to...
Yeah, because one nurse from each building, I have another administrator with myself going, so, and I think that the Central School is the building that you would definitely want to have represented, because they're gonna have to do most of the self-administration. And if Mrs. Nichols can figure it out, then I think it would be pretty easy.
And how many nurses do we have in each building currently?
Two.
Two in each building? Full-time? Full-time?
Mm-hmm, yes. And we do, excuse me, we do have the ability to hire more staff to help us implement this that will be supported with the DESI funding for the first six weeks, and then we would have to pick it up after that. But most of, at the Mitchell and the high school, most of it is just training for observation. So we would set up a schedule and a staff member or another repurposed individual, whoever that we determine that to be with the administrators, would then just observe that an individual is doing it correctly. So that should be much faster.
And do you have to pick like one day so that the lab knows? Every Wednesday, we're getting Eastbridge water samples, you know, if you were to do the whole pool.
Yeah, so we're connected with the lab right now, and those are logistics that I'm assuming that they're going to let us pick when we want to test, and then they will just send a courier out to pick up our test. We were matched in such a way that I think that other schools in the area, so that, you know, they might be able to come out and pick up a couple.
So that would be our recommendation to move forward. So I'm going to hear from Watertown, and then once we start the pool testing in a couple of weeks, you have some time to think about it, but I think that that is the way to go. It, I think it would give peace of mind. I think it would support our families and our parents with younger children and older children, as Tim has said. And I think it will, it'll support our teachers as well, to give them a little bit of, not really, just peace of mind of the pool and where it's coming and, you know, what we can do with it. So that'd be our recommendation. I'm going to hand, we're done. So Karen and I are done, we're going to move out of the way.
One last quick question. This goes till the end of the school year, correct? Like this is through June, whenever?
So the intent, the program is for six weeks, and the intent is for the school districts to then pick it up for the rest of the.
Okay, at what cost?
The same cost that it would be costing in DESI.
Okay.
So we signed an assurance that we would go forward with it.
Okay.
So, and John and I have spoke about that, and we have the funding to do it.
Sure.
It, for us, it will keep kids in school, it'll keep parents, you know, with a peace of mind. It will also keep our teachers knowing that, you know, we do believe that we want, or we want them to know that we want everyone healthy and then safe, and we will continue to move forward.
So this trial, sorry.
No, you go.
So this trial period goes roughly through the first week in April, and then from that point on until the middle of June, we pick it up from our end?
Yeah, I think the date is March 28th is the end date. But it would help us with the pool testing to continue this.
Sure, no, I understand.
Because even with the pool testing, you would have to quarantine as close contact. So that's another benefit to having the By Next Now test, is that we would be able to do those tests.
Sure.
I think what would be interesting to see too, if we can get that data sooner rather than later, is the participation percentage when consent is sent out, how many parents are going to consent versus how many aren't.
And we need 80%.
Well, for the data to be really good, but you can do it with whatever, right?
But we need to do the pool testing and to.
No, for the data to be reliable, we need 80% so that we can, we can say we're catching all the asymptomatic or that we're not transmitting in the building. But some districts are just doing staff, or some districts are just doing one school and.
Right, I mean, there's some, the data may not be as valuable from a holistic standpoint, not to an 80%, but you're still going to catch stuff. Right, Karen? I mean, is that the way to look at it?
So when we watch, when I watched the webinar, as they said, you are shooting for an 80% target because it doesn't do good, any good, to go into a room and only test two people in the room.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so if you're not getting 80, 80%-ish, your data's not going to be reliable, and you're really doing a lot of effort for very little results. So if we get full staff participation, I would recommend that we start there. Because I think that the staff are really supporting this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the staff really want it.
It takes a week or two of that to help parents get along. Or if we get full participation, or a solid amount of participation in one building over another, we can, we can do one building.
Did any of you have any other questions? I have one last follow-up, but I didn't want to take this.
No, thank you, go ahead.
Last question, this may be from Mrs. Byrne. So just walk me through the logistics of how this works. So Wednesday is our day, let's say. So is there a 20-minute sample gathering period school-wide every morning where every class does it, and then it's collected? Does the nurse go around to every class? How does this actually happen?
We'll know more after the visit to Watertown.
Okay.
But I'll just say, my vision without knowing that information would be, it would be better for our students. And instructionally, if we had a nurse and a team that went room by room, did it room at a time, little to, no disruption, obstruction, and just kind of went through the building.
Gotcha. So it's just something that happens over the course of the morning on one day a week, and gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you. So Dr. Williams worked with principals for, and works for them all the time, but feverishly last few days on any changes or things that we need to look at. And we try to throw every baseball at their heads, at their bodies that we could, that could possibly interfere with making a plan. Meaning, so we throw something at them, well, what if this happens? And what if that were to happen? And what would you do if this could happen? And what would you do? And I think Dr. Williams took all that information, sat with the principals. I think they did a well-thought-out plan at all three buildings, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
Great, thank you.
Want us to go down now? Yeah, no?
Yeah, as soon as they begin, we can have you go to the audience to view the slideshow. Just to sort of set the stage, since our meeting last Tuesday, the building principals all had building-wide staff meetings on Wednesday. And as the superintendent said, there's lots of priorities from parents and from staff members, and we're trying to be mindful of all of those things, you know, considering we want more in-person days for students. We want to be mindful of the needs of our fully remote students. And also, there was lots of conversation around the Wednesdays and how they're currently being used and how they may be used going forward. All the building principals formed task force teams. It was open to everyone in their building if they wanted to be part of a task force team to meet with the building principals and develop what that transition to in-person is going to look like in their buildings. You will see that it will look a little bit different in each building. And the reason is because every building is different. They've got different ages, different needs, developmental levels. And so you'll see that transition be a little bit different, but it's well-thought-out, and it's keeping the students and the teachers within those buildings in the forefront. So I will, we'll start with Mrs. Byrne. She'll go through her building, and then we'll go right up through the junior, senior high school and hear the thought that all of their staff members with their building principals put into their plans.
Great.
Can I just ask a general question? And this is probably more pertinent for all the principals. Was there a good number of teachers and staff participating in the task force?
So what we'll do is we'll have, when they come up, to share theirs. They'll share with you the representation that they had.
Okay, okay.
Can you see it? Well, you can look here and just tell it to turn.
It feels weird to move down.
Go down. I'll do my best, I'll just clean it up.
Good evening. At middle school, I'd like to say, our act, we had 15 teachers across all grade levels and including special area teachers that were part of this process. We had two meetings, both about two hours in length, one Thursday, one on Friday, after our staff meeting on Wednesday. And they were really devoted to this process and trying to find a transition plan that was developmentally appropriate, that kept students in the forefront, and how we ultimately get to school committee's goal, which was those five full days of full in-person learning. So I have a couple of different slides for you. This breaks down the hybrid students and what the impact our phases in would be to get them up to five full days. Now, based on information shared this evening by the superintendent and Karen Clifford, my understanding here is we've got some potential shifting here due to potential delay in vaccination. Correct? So when we look ahead here, step one is teachers getting that first opportunity for their vaccination shot. Step two is to increase in-person learning, starting March 1st, with our full transition here with anticipation by March 15th. All students in K to 2 would be in five full days. So initially, we have phase one broken down to two weeks, where we would gradually bring in all hybrid students to four days of in-person learning. Now, that's the rolling date. So there's the potential that we might be a week out from that, looking at more of our start, that second week, that March 8th through 12th. But initially, as you can see, we're gradually bringing our students in, four days in person, keeping our Wednesdays fully remote with the suggestion here that first week of March. If we are delayed and we just go straight to week two, phase one will just be one week long. But it would be the phase that you have here from March 8th through 12th, which happens to also be our parent-teacher conference week. The recommendation would still be to have our hybrid students come in for two full days on that Monday and Tuesday of that week. That would be both, bringing both cohorts together. So all in-person students are here in present two full days. Remote Wednesday, it's a half-day of learning for conference cycle. It would still be a remote day, again, allowing us some transition time with our full remote students. And I'll share a little bit more about that in the next slide. And then that Thursday and Friday of the half-day would still be both groups in, all students in, in grades one and two, in person. Now kindergarten, initially, if we started this March week one, we were going to keep kindergarten the exact same model that they're currently in with AM and PM sessions. We would gradually increase and expand our schedules for specials and lunch. Now we'll be going to the cafeteria, lots of things are changing. So we wanted to capture a week of bringing the bigger kids in first for four full days before bringing in K. But if we are delayed, we will still stick to kindergarten being AM and PM session Monday, Tuesday, those first two full days of that conference week. But here's where we bring them together. Those three half-days that would typically be for AM kindergarten, we would make sure now, this is where those two cohorts come together as one. So our PM session and AM session are now one for three half-days. First opportunity for them to get to know their opposite cohort classmates, and the first time the class will come together as a whole. Great opportunity, half-day increments, new routines, new faces, new schedules. We would do that for three half-days where all of K is in. But again, it's just that morning session up until noon. Which would then bring us to phase two. Phase two is when we say we're all in five full days, which is, again, is the goal. At this point, week three, or maybe week two if we are delayed, from March 15th through 19th, we have all grades, grades one, two, and kindergarten in for five full days. We've now relinquished the remote Wednesdays, they disappear. So all students are live and in-person for five full days of instruction. Now, the transition here for fully remotes is extremely important, and we have a whole slide devoted to that. Thank you. So initially, again, this, I'd still like to keep the same. Even if we are delayed by vaccination by a week, I would like to still keep this consistent. Our fully remote teacher and our fully remote students need time to transition. It's a new opportunity for them. We will be sure to make sure that our full remote students still have social emotional opportunities with their homeroom classroom for the remainder of the year. That will be maintained. They have this classroom family, they maintain these relationships, these personal connections that is still part of their classroom. So they will still have those live engagements, whether it's a morning meeting or a closing circle, those things will continue. But the recommendation for this new full-remote teacher starts the week after February vacation. That teacher gets to introduce themselves virtually to families, to students, as get-to-know-me, meet-and-greet, those types of opportunities. The remote teacher then visits all the classrooms as synchronous instruction is going on that last week in February, getting to see the full remote students, getting to watch and observe synchronous instruction live as it unfolds in the classroom, seeing how first-grade teachers and second-grade teachers or kindergarten teachers are simultaneously teaching now. So that helps this remote teacher get some good ideas about what that's going to look like and sound like when he or she takes over these students. In addition here, the remote teacher then attends weekly grade-level meetings, also attends professional development. We have PD that week. It's important for that teacher to participate in that and have opportunity for co-planning as we move forward into this new instructional model. Then here goes into week two and three, which, if you think about the hybrid student, is really their phase one. But what we have here is the remote students participate in a live engagement opportunity, morning meeting, closing circle with the homeroom class. That's intact Monday through Friday. Now, here's the gradual release. Now, the gradual release for full-remote students is that in grades one and grade two, the full-remote teacher would have them in for four days. So that full-remote teacher is now creating this new classroom community, takes over the instruction on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays and Fridays, because we still have that remote Wednesday in play. So this could be for one week or two, depending on the vaccination. So that Wednesday is still a synchronous opportunity for all learners, whether they're the full remotes or the kids that are in person. They still stay connected as we have this gradual release and still have the remote Wednesdays. So again, that could be two weeks or one, depending on when we start. The full-remote teacher will provide a minimum of two hours of live synchronous engagement in grades one and grade two over the course of that time. And again, that's at minimum. The full-remote teachers will also be teaching and co-teaching with the reading specialists. All fully remote students this year have had a reading intervention provided by a reading specialist. That will continue. And now there's opportunity for co-teaching with this remote teacher and the reading specialists. Let's see here, special area lessons will be shifting and changing. That model will be shifting for the whole building. But here for remote students, that will go to an asynchronous lesson. Currently, they are synchronous with our new model. But once we shift to full in-person, our special area teachers will be teaching full in-person students. They will still create those asynchronous digital lessons that will still be accessed in the remote teacher's Google Classroom for all students. The change here is that the second week, March 8th through 12th, is when we have that shift with kindergarten. Kindergarten students currently do have full remote reading instruction available to them already. That will be maintained throughout that transition period. The real big difference will be noticed for kindergarten with their remote learning come March 15th. And that's when kindergarten, which has been half-day, is now full day. So now those remote students who are used to receiving 20 minutes of live instruction and then having two and a half hours of learning, will now have up to five hours of learning that will be available to them and 60 minutes of live instruction to reflect what a full-day kindergarten program would look like. We will be sure, I've already had conversation with staff, we'll be sure to highlight what we would consider the must-dos for our kindergarten students, like the priorities. We want everything, we'd love for them to complete everything, but if we know that if stamina is going to be an issue for them, we will make sure, make sure that they know what the priorities are and the power standards are covered for those students. Not sure if there are any questions as of yet. As we expand, we know we have to expand our special schedule and our lunch and recess schedule because now when we have full-day kindergarten in, we're adding two sets of lunches. And now we've added two additional blocks to our special schedule, which we already have considered, that's already going to be in place. But again, it takes time to expand and make some shifts and changes. That's why the gradual approach allowed us to slowly incrementally get first grade and second grade up to speed. And then when we bring in kindergarten, you know, add them on in. So whether we have the two weeks to do that or the one, we will, we will make that work. Either way, we're happy to kind of do it in increments and stages. I would also say, not that we would anticipate, but if for any reason we were delayed beyond that, I would still propose that on the half-days for a conference cycle, that my two cohorts for kindergarten still come together. So that way PM kindergarten does not have to learn from home, that they could all be together no matter what on those Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of conference week. But hopefully, we're not delayed that long. But if so, I'd still advocate that we make that shift. We can go on to the next one if you don't mind? Thank you. So just additional things to consider, I may have mentioned them along the way here. So obviously, we'll need to expand our lunch and recess. In order to do that, we're also going to be. In order to do that, we're also going to be transitioning to the cafeteria. We have been eating in our classrooms, and we've had delivery to our classrooms, which has been very successful. But now if we're going to double our numbers and shift our schedules, the cafeteria makes the most sense at this point in time. In order to do that safely, we will have partitions and dividers at cafeteria tables, so four students could sit at a table. Seats will be assigned by class. Students will have the same seat every day, so basically, as the seating chart would be put into place. To avoid lines and the buildup with that for our students who have not really had the chance to practice that yet this year, we will still continue to deliver meals to them, but in their seats. So we don't have congestion, we know what they want, COVID monitors have been excellent, we cannot have done our lunch process without them, and they'll be vital to the continued success of this model by delivering those meals to the students in their seats, avoiding crowds and lines. Mass breaks, this might come up. Mass breaks happen at six feet of social distancing. So for us to continue this with ma, we might be some, there might be some opportunity for six feet or six-feet spot within a room for an individual mass break. However, moving forward, mass breaks in the classroom, they can still occur, and so we'll snack, but there'll be, be a divider between students so they can take their masks off, because we're going to be a little closer than six feet. We still encourage that mass breaks can also happen outside. And as we move towards spring, hopefully, once February and Mother Nature's done with the snow, we'll have more opportunity to do so. I've kind of already shared with you our special schedule and the transitioning that we'll have there. So our specialists, instead of having to see all students, 450 students in a week, our model will be shifting to a week-long special. So whether you're a full-remote friend or an in-person friend, you can count on having five days of arts, then the next week, maybe five days of music, so on and so forth. Special areas will be planning five-day units as we move forward. It lessens the teacher's exposure, provides a little bit more consistency, and that will be our new model. From that, I'd put in place March 1 regardless. As we move into this third term for us, our trimester, I would start that March 1. So we'll start that at that point in time. Just like the shift for, for remote teacher, I still recommend that we stay on track with that regardless of when we actually can get everybody fully in-person, that we stay on track with that as well. Let's see, snow remote learning day. Now the shift here for us, giving up the Wednesdays, right? Talking about remote Wednesdays are going to be a thing of the past. So in regard to that, the way in which teachers have been planning is going to drastically change. So there's no longer going to be these daily digital lesson plans that teachers have been putting out in their Google classrooms, because they're not going to be teaching that way. The full remote teacher will need to continue to plan and to address skills that way and put out that platform. But here's the shift for the in-person learner. The things are going to be more hands-on, you're going to see much less screen time for them and what we think, you know, developmentally appropriate. So we're going to be better able to differentiate for our students, hands-on in the classroom, and now this full-remote teacher that's going to be dedicated to a certain population of students, all-in-one learning mode, will also be better able to differentiate and meet the needs of their students, because they're not caught between simultaneous teaching. So we're looking forward to that benefit. Because of that, our plans get altered, and so some of these things, when we think about remote learning days, look a little different moving forward, once we move into this in-person model. If a snow remote learning day was called, teachers will have, we've already had a conversation about it, some already have templates shared, we need to have an idea of what a full-snow remote learning day or other type of inclement weather day lesson plan would look like. So they're going to be crafting and creating those already, so that they're somewhat ready to go in the event a snow day is called. They'd still be related to content and curriculum, it just necessarily wouldn't be the next day's lesson plan, if that makes sense. But they'd be ready to go and available and put out asynchronously and in the Google classroom by 8:30 on a snow remote day. They still would also provide synchronous instruction to students on those learning days as well. Just notice the shift in the planning, and that's the big thing about the Wednesdays disappearing, that's the change in how and the amount of time that they need to prepare these types of lessons. Class quarantine. If a whole class was to quarantine in grades one and grade two, the teacher will provide a minimum of two hours of live engagement per day. The team felt strongly they need a little time to do that. Here again is, we're no longer planning with digital slides on a daily basis. So they'd need a little time to turn it around, prepare their materials, and then they would be doing their synchronous instruction throughout the quarantine period. Kindergarten, it would be 60 minutes, as we mentioned a little bit before. Once we go to remote instruction and we have a full day for kindergarten, they would get 60 minutes of synchronous instruction on a quarantined day. If that makes sense, I don't know if there's any questions there.
I'm going to get you that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, sorry. That's okay, I haven't gotten there yet.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
No, no worries. I'm still just focused on the whole class quarantine first, but yep, it's a good question, I'll be there in two seconds. The teacher will still maintain the Google classroom, and will have recommended activities and links to individualized, individualized learning platforms for students to be able to access for in-person learning. That's different than the digital synchronous lesson plans that we've been putting out. So I just want to have a clear distinction. There will still be slides in there that say, what can I do? You can go on Lexia, you can go on iReady My Path, like there'll be things that they can do, it will just look a little different. Now, student in quarantine. Within two school days, the classroom teacher will provide instructional materials for students in quarantine on a weekly basis. Teacher will maintain contact with the family and student during the quarantine period. The student will have access to live engagement, morning meeting, closing circle opportunity, whatever that might look like, just like the full-remote student. So if you recall me saying that the full-remote students would still have an opportunity to stay connected to their homeroom throughout the year, any student that's quarantined could hop on and still be part of that morning meeting or closing circle, or whatever special engagement opportunity would be. They'd still have access to that link, it would still be provided, it'd still be synchronous. The rest of the instructional materials are, we will package them and prepare them, and it's more and more of those pick-up, like our printed packet materials that we have now for our fully-remote students or packets we send home with our hybrid students currently. So it kind of goes back to, when you think of pre-COVID times, if a student was out due to an injury or an extended illness, the teacher would prepare the materials, these are the papers, these are the lessons, here's the book that you're going to need on a weekly basis, here's all your instructional materials. Because everything shifted for in-person learning. There's no more simultaneous teaching going on when we're all in, if that makes sense. So again, a shift, because when you're hybrid and you're simultaneously teaching, that's been the beauty of our model, even though, right, it's, nothing's perfect, you've been able to seamlessly go back and forth no matter what. That will change once we're all in, in teaching in-person, five full days. Any questions about that? I know that might be a little bit to digest, because it is a shift, but it's a shift in how we're instructing. Busing, we know that at the moment, it's been based on current cohort assignment, when we talk about the current shift. We know that the district is going to be doing a lot of work with Lucini to try to see how we can problem-solve and come up with good solutions for families. I think we're all well aware that that is definitely one of the greatest challenges. As far as instruction and everything else that we can control, we're in really good shape. It's these other things that takes the partnership with the community to make work. Yes?
What about recess? Do you feel that the phase of the state of distancing and whatever you mean?
For recess, we still will use the zones that we had in place, because our distancing changes a little bit. Instead of just having half the cohort, it's the whole class that's out there at a given time, but spacing will still, will still work. Granted, there'll be more of them out there, but again, our restrictions have also changed. And once, when snow's not an issue, we have a lot of wide-open space. And when nicer weather comes, the fields open up again, there's lots of opportunity, but...
Do they still wear their masks at recess?
They have a choice. Students can wear masks at recess, they do not have to take them off, but they have the option of taking them off when they are outside.
Well, they wear it at six feet.
Oh, on these space outdoors. I will say, I didn't put it here specifically, but we will be shifting the schedules for lunch and recess. Currently, recess has been running 30 minutes, and students have had a 30-minute recess and a 20-minute lunch. That will be shifting with our new model when we go back to a more typical schedule, where the recess will go from 30 minutes down to 20 minutes. And instead of teachers watching, monitoring lunch, it's COVID monitors, and then teachers will have a split shift with recess duty, monitoring students at play. Anything else?
Are you likely to have our remote teachers in place in time?
I'm extremely fortunate. I have two amazing people who are interested and going to be our remote teachers. It's not 100% official in the sense that I don't have a memo up to the superintendent, but they're ready. They've already committed, they've already said yes. And I will share with you, they're both very familiar with Central School, they're both current employees of Central School, they're very familiar with our routines, our expectations, the curriculum, and the students. So I, you know, I'm very pleased, I don't think I could have, you know, handpicked two better people to move forward. I will suggest to make sure it's clear, our remote teachers, we will have a remote teacher that handles first grade and second grade, kind of like that full-time position, and then like the halftime position is the full-remote for kindergarten, just so you have an understanding. So the remote teacher will be sharing two grades. We've already had draft schedules with my transition committee for potential of how that could look, what that could look like, so we have a lot of options out of the gate that we've already shared with this candidate, who's also very excited about the opportunity.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I turned it off.
Good evening, everybody. First, I just want to start off by saying, I've been contacted since last week by a number of parents on both sides of, of the, the opening plan, and just want to say that, you know, I appreciate that people are reaching out to us. It's certainly helpful to us in making plans to hear from people regardless of, of what their opinion is, and we're listening to those individuals. You know, as a, as a parent of three school-aged children who are currently attending school in a hybrid model, as well as being married to a teacher who is teaching fully remote currently and preparing to go back into the building, I feel like I have a pretty broad perspective on this situation, and, and I can understand and appreciate varying perspectives of this. That being said, you know, we're educators, and we know that in-person learning is what is best and most effective for students, and we're seeing the impacts of kids not, not being able to be in school as much as we feel that they need to be. Certainly understand the concerns of families and, and the need for some students to remain remote, but, you know, the, the reason for us moving ahead is because we firmly believe that this is what's best for our students. So that's the perspective that, that we're coming from and that we're bringing to the planning process. So this is just a snapshot of the current enrollment numbers. You can see there the breakdown by grade level, by cohorts, number of students we have in four days, that's a number I'm very proud of, and I have to give credit to Mrs. Wilmarth and Mrs. Lofstrom in my main office, and Mrs. Benner in the central office, without whom we wouldn't have been able to make that happen for those kids, just from a logistical standpoint. There's a lot involved, but it was worth all the effort, and I, and I appreciate the help that I got in that process. You also see there total number of remote students and just our total enrollment. So obviously, you know, the numbers, this is where we're at currently in terms of our planning process, we're planning with these numbers in mind, but also understanding that some things may shift as parents learn about our plans and make decisions about what's going to be best for them and for their kids. I'll set with that one, thank you. All right, so as Dr. Williams mentioned at the start of this, the plans for the schools are individualized, and the reason for that is, you know, the needs for the buildings are unique, and therefore, the response to this plan and what the plan looks like is going to be unique. In terms of developing the plan to the point that it's at right now, we did have representation from each of the grade levels, from special education, from special areas, and the school nurse. So, you know, we had what I would consider to be wide participation. Those individuals were asked to and did speak with their colleagues in their respective areas, and were able to report back to me in what was a really short timeline. So, you know, I want to thank the people that have been involved and, and all the teachers and other staff members that have been involved in conversations in those different areas, because I know that it was a short timeline to try and put our, our initial plans together, but I also felt confident that we could do it, because we have a great group of people working on this and working in the building in general. So what our plan looks like for reopening would be four days in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and maintaining the remote day on Wednesdays. I'll speak to that a little bit more as we move forward. Just to be clear, students that are fully remote and wanted to continue to do that would still have that option. I know there was, there seemed to be some confusion based on communication I received from parents about whether or not that was going to continue to be an option. Fully remote would remain an option. The other option, however, would be the four days in person with one day remote. The hybrid option would not be there any longer. We have a recommended start date of March 15th. There's a few different reasons for that. One is the March 8th week, we have parent-teacher conferences. We felt like that would be a good opportunity for parents to ask questions and, and get answers to those prior to rolling out the plan. Obviously, if we need to make adjustments due to the vaccination situation, we'll certainly do that, but, but this would be our target date. You know, along the lines of vaccinations, we anticipated that this date would likely be one where hopefully, teachers will have had that opportunity for the vaccination, and, and will continue to hope that, that things move in that direction. And then, and then just the additional time to make sure that all our plans are in place and, and ready to go. And certainly, we're already off to a great start, but as I'm sure you can all appreciate, there's a lot of logistics involved, and I feel like the reason plans that we have made to this point have worked out well is because we've planned those thoroughly. We want to make sure with this shift, which is significant, that we provide ample opportunity for that shift to take place. With regard to the furniture in the classrooms, based on the current numbers of in-person learners, so kids that are currently either four days or kids that are currently attending in a hybrid model, the, if we were to take all of those in-person learners and bring them in on the four days, the largest class size in the building would be 21 students. Desks would certainly need to be added to classrooms from where they're at right now. Across the building, the number of desks that would need to be added would range from three to nine, depending on the classroom, just the classroom enrollment. I will say, in general, the younger grades have a need for more desks to be added, just because the enrollment in those grades is, is higher than it is at the upper grades. I, I think the benefit of that is, you know, younger grades, generally speaking, smaller people, more space available. The spacing will be equal to, greater than or equal to three feet. You know, if we don't need to go down to three feet, then, then we won't do that, but just being candid, there may be instances that we would need to do that, but again, that would still be in line with CDC recommendations, and obviously, all of our protocols that are currently in place, and I have to say, have been followed in an outstanding manner, would still be in place. Lunches currently in the cafeteria, we have two students sitting at a table with a divider. These are tables for 10. And then we have students eating in the classrooms that are not in the cafeteria. Basically, the plan moving forward would be to add additional students to those tables, so we would bring it up to four. We would add additional guards for dividing, providing the divider between the kids. And then we're, we're exploring secondary locations. I would like to move away These are tables for 10. And then we have students eating in the classrooms that are not in the cafeteria. Basically, the plan moving forward would be to add additional students to those tables, so we would bring it up to four. We would add additional guards for dividing, providing the divider between the kids. And then we're exploring secondary locations. I would like to move away from eating in the classrooms altogether for a variety of reasons. Certainly with the closer spacing, if the kids were to eat in the cafeteria, we would either have to address that by moving some of the kids out or looking at other, you know, mitigation factors. But again, my preference is to not eat in the cafeteria. And we're exploring some other locations such as the stage and some other big open spaces that we could utilize and set up kids in a way that they could eat, that they could have their mask off, but we could maintain that safe distance. Some additional considerations that we'll be putting into place and making arrangements for, some additional signage in the hallways. We have some, basically some striping that we got for the hallways to encourage kids to kind of stay on one side or the other. And then we have just a lot of protocols that are in place that the teachers have adopted over the course of the year that have been great, even simple things, just in terms of lining up and how they do that, how they mark those places. We would certainly continue to do those things and explore any additional measures we'd need to take. We have been and would continue to stagger our arrival and dismissal. At the, for many years at the Mitchell School, the buses would pull in in the morning and the kids would sit on the bus until a particular time, it was 8:10. Then they would all unload at one time and come into the building. Currently, our arrival process begins at 8 o'clock and it ends at 8:20. And buses roll in and as they roll in, they're emptied. Cars are sort of coming in in a staggered format and kids are coming right into the building at that point. So there's no holding students in the bus, there's no students held in the auditorium. And we can just get students moved into the classrooms where we feel like it's, you know, the safest place for them to be and be able to know that, you know, they're supervised and they're also maintaining those safe distances. As far as dismissal goes, we have been and will continue to stagger that. Currently, we release bus students by grade levels. So we release bus students in the bottom levels of the building first. We pause, we then release bus students from the upper floors. We wait for all those students to get on the bus and then send them. And then we dismiss our students that are walkers or being picked up. We've also utilized both of our entrances as entrances and exits based on grade levels so that students aren't all coming in or going out from one set of doors and we'll continue to do that as well. And then just a general review of our protocols. Again, I have to say, I do feel like they've been very effective and certainly staff and student participation in that and maintaining that has been really critical. I'll set with that one. Thank you. Remote learners. So students will continue to join their current homerooms for morning and/or closing meeting. Most classes have a morning meeting and most classes have a closing meeting, but as we move forward with this model, we're providing the opportunity for that connection to be either morning or in the afternoon, understanding that with this new model and with different things going on in person than maybe going on remotely, we may need to allow for a little flexibility there. What I will say, however, is it will be clearly communicated to those students and families that are remote when those opportunities are to connect with their classroom and those will happen on a daily basis. The instruction for remote students will transition to a remote teacher. And what we're anticipating at this point is a teacher for grades three and four and a teacher for grades five and six. The remote teacher will collaborate with the grade level. I'm very, very proud of the work that the teachers have done this year to provide for curriculum consistency at the grade levels and I would certainly want to continue that. Whether a student was remote or a student was in person, we want to ensure that they're, you know, being exposed to the same materials, the same curriculum, and getting the, you know, appropriate amount of support that they need. At this point, we're anticipating that students will receive a minimum of two hours of live instruction a day if they are fully remote. I would anticipate that being a starting point that we would work up from. Again, being candid, there will need to be planning in place to coordinate between remote students and connecting them with their in-person classes. There will need to be opportunities to collaborate between the in-person teachers and the remote teachers. So we want to, you know, we want to give the baseline of that two hours of live instruction, but I would anticipate as the program gets up and running and the remote teachers begin to get that schedule well established, that the opportunity for that to increase would be there. Specials for remote students will be asynchronous on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. On Wednesdays, however, where we'll have the fully remote day, those students that are fully remote would join their homerooms, their current homerooms, for their special area classes which are live on Wednesdays. Those have been live on Wednesdays and those will continue to be for all students. One of the things that we've discussed, and I know that parents may have questions and or concerns about, is the idea of remote students moving to a remote teacher. And I think the simplest way that I can explain why we would suggest that is the following. We want for students to get the attention that they need and deserve. And if it's the in-person students, then I want for those students to get the attention and the support of the teachers that are in person with them. If students are remote, we also want for them to get the appropriate amount of support and attention that they require. And I don't want to give the impression that our teachers, while we've been doing this hybrid model, have not been able to balance those things because I've been amazed at the things that they have done. However, it's a huge task and to do both in-person and remote at the same time is a really, it's a big ask and it's creating a strain for a lot of people. And more importantly, for students, I think that we could address their needs in a better way if they have the attention of an in-person teacher if they're in person and a remote teacher if they're remote. So that's where that, that's the basis for that decision. As far as Wednesdays, you can't see it right now on this slide, but at the top of it, it did say, "Wednesdays are remote for all students." So just so that that is clear in this model. As a result of that, students can, you know, focus on learning without being concerned about masks, without worrying about sanitizing, so on and so forth. They can form deeper and more personalized connections with teachers and classmates. We talk about relationships all the time in education and I cannot even begin to explain the importance of the relationships that educators form with their students. And I can tell you, even in my own experience of having meetings with my staff and doing those remotely and not having the mask on, it really does feel like a different personal experience that you have with individuals. So we feel like that's an important thing from a social-emotional standpoint for our And then also by having this schedule, you know, it creates a situation where remote students, it provides a real genuine opportunity for them to join their classmates. As far as the teachers, the teachers certainly were in support of keeping the Wednesdays remote and had a number of different reasons for why they felt that it was important. I've been able to witness, you know, the things that they spoke to in this process. I've seen not only the work that has been done, but the result of that work, which I feel is very important and valuable. But teachers can collaborate as a grade level. They can plan lessons, create shared materials. They can consult with and support both remote teachers and remote students. And then lastly, they can participate in professional development, which may be content-related. I know this Wednesday, actually, there are a number of teachers at my school during the afternoon session will be participating in a social studies training for a new program that we have. And had that opportunity not been available on the Wednesday, planning that professional development would have been much more of a challenge and would have likely involved teachers being pulled out of their classrooms, which again, we know is not good for kids. And then I just put MCAS up there. We have MCAS coming. MCAS is going to be different this year. Having opportunities to prepare for that, you know, those are other things that we anticipate that time on Wednesdays being available for. So certainly, I'm sure there, you know, there may be questions from parents. Happy to answer those. We've tried to be responsive as quickly as possible. The parents that have reached out to us in the last week about this. There are certainly logistical plans that we'll have to continue to develop, but I'm very confident that we'll be able to put this plan in place and for it to be a success. Happy to answer any questions anybody might have at this point. Trista.
As far as the Wednesday schedule to remain fully remote for all students, is the expectation that that will go through the end of the school year? Or is that just going to depend on...
This would be my plan moving forward. We would certainly evaluate on a continual basis the need to remain remote. And if the transition seemed appropriate and, you know, all the various factors were addressed, then, you know, ultimately, we want to be back in person five days for sure. But as of this point, I don't have any sort of timeline in terms of what that transition could potentially look like.
I was just looking back at Mrs. Benner's plan and just trying to keep, you know, the details as far as what her, the phasing in for Central School is. You know, there's more of a definition around phasing in for five days, but obviously the schools have different needs, different space, et cetera. So, thank you.
Andrew?
Yes.
Don't shoot the messenger. Mask break. Sorry, I get it all the time, so I'm just going to ask it all right.
What's the question?
What is your plan for mask break?
Well, we would continue to do a number of the things that we're doing now. So when we can, and it happens often, even when it's been cold out, teachers are taking kids outside and/or they're utilizing spaces in the building where kids can take the appropriate amount of space for a break. That might be the gym, it might be the auditorium, it might be a certain number of kids getting an opportunity to go with another staff member to a space and they cycle that through the classroom. So we would continue to do those things.
And do you have remote teachers, or do you think you can get remote teachers in time for, you're looking at March 15?
Yes.
Do you think you'll have remote teachers in place?
I do. I think that we'll certainly be spending some time in the near term to address that, but I'm confident and from what I understand, it's not just my opinion, but the Mitchell School's a good place to work, so hopefully that will entice some people. But I am confident that we'll have what we need in place.
So if a remote student, this is, I was wondering, how did you, how do you, it's a two-part question. So I was wondering how you arrived at the two hours of live instruction per day? And then my second part of the question is, if a student is having, a remote student is having difficulty with whatever in the curriculum and they need help outside of the two hours, would they be able to get help?
The two hours comes from basically trying to, based on the numbers that we have right now, trying to make an estimation of what is a, two parts of it. What is an amount of instruction that we anticipate will provide students clear understanding and direction so that then for anything else additional that they need to be working on, they'll be in a place to be able to do that with success? Two hours was that place, you know, in talking with, in my own experience and talking with teachers. That being said, as I mentioned, this is also what I would consider to be a starting point that we would be looking to work up from. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, working with, you know, if we're looking at two remote teachers who basically at this point in time would have a classroom load of about 50 kids, planning that and making sure that they have opportunities to connect with their current teachers and class, to make sure that they're getting the instruction that they need, you know, we want to be realistic about what they can expect and also making sure that they have all those opportunities because their schedule is going to have to be something that we plan out really specifically, once we know exactly who's doing what as far as the models go. With respect to remote students potentially needing more assistance, the answer to that question is absolutely they would be able to get it. And one of the reasons for going with the remote teacher is we anticipate that by having those remote teachers in place to focus on those remote students, those type of situations would be much more easily handled than teachers that are trying to both address the needs of kids that are in the classroom and those that are remote. And again, I want to stress, however, that our teachers have done an amazing job. What we have asked them to do was huge and it continues to be on a daily basis. And I have been so impressed by that. But also, with that being said, you know, we all attended school in a very different way than we're seeing now and as educators, we are trained differently. So we're trying to put teachers in a position so that they can do their best so that students get what they deserve and what they need.
For you or for Liz? Dessie has said that for remote learners, they want 40 hours every two weeks. So this is 20 hours. And I understand it says minimum, but there's a big difference between 20 and 40. How do we rectify that?
Yep. I'll go with that. So the structured learning time as put out by Dessie is based on the district model. So if we were a fully remote district, then it would be 40 hours over the 10-day period. Because we are a hybrid district, it's 35 hours. And it goes by the models that the district has adopted. So it's not 35 hours for the kids that are working in hybrid, 40 hours for the kids that are working remote. It's one model based on the district. And the premise behind it is because it's what we offer as opposed to what students have elected to take part in.
So what do we consider for the four-day being for all in-person kids but still have a remote option? What is the state expectation for that?
So it's still the district model. So our district model for this, we're still considered hybrid because we will have a day that students are working remotely. So the in-person time that our hybrid students are getting is part of our structured learning time. So they'll be well over the 35 hours over a two-week period.
Thank you.
You may have mentioned this, but with the upcoming parent conferences, will they be in-person or will they be remote like they were last?
We're anticipating the conferences being remote. Yep.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for anyone else, but were there any community surveys based on how well parents can adapt to whether their child is full-in or full-remote?
Survey, I'm sorry, surveys on, what was it?
On whether parents will be able to adapt to their schedules to account for their child's being full-in or full-remote.
I don't know, I mean, I didn't personally survey parent adaptability to the potential of the changing model. That being said, you know, I do feel that, you know, between the superintendent communicating about this since the end of 2020 anyway and into this point and then continued conversations that parents have anticipated some changes coming. That being said, we recognize that, you know, any change with regard to, you know, when kids are home or when they're at school is certainly something that parents have to, in some cases, parents struggle with. And I can appreciate that on a personal level. So we will certainly do whatever we can to work with parents. We have before and after care program that has been outstanding that I know will be an option for some families. And beyond that, you know, we'll certainly explore things that we can to help support families because again, I can appreciate that changes can be difficult to adapt to.
Anything else?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Now we'll move on to the junior senior high school. Like Andrew, I did throw up some numbers here for you to look at. The two areas I want to look at are the total in-person students between cohort A, B, and then cohort D, the four-day in-person, 755. And our remote students... then cohort D, the four-day in-person, 755, and our remote students is 233. So looking at the transition to an in-person model, that is kind of what our task force was using as a guideline, or a base, or a foundation for us to really think about what our plan's gonna be. So when I offered the volunteerism for our task force, we had a few members volunteer. Unfortunately, some things did happen, the timing of the meetings, things like that. So we have at this time nine members, a wide range of different departments in both junior and the senior high schools. So we do feel we have a pretty good, strong group, who's gonna help us in trying to plan this out. Again, this is a working model, based on the information that we're collecting, based on the feedback that we're getting from parents. Please, to all the families out there, please make sure, communicate with us like they've been saying, we will get back to you as quickly as we can. Any phone call, good or bad, every email, we will try to respond in kind, to make sure that we take your information and utilize it in our decision-making. Next slide? Okay, so our model is based on the premise of reducing our distance amongst students to three feet. In order to provide the opportunity for students to return to school, to return to classes, we need to make sure our distance reduces to three feet, which is still CDC guideline of three to six feet. I've been working with our custodial staff. Next week, we're gonna stop putting all the furniture back into the classrooms, even though we're not having students return in full immediately after the break. But the visual, I think, will be very important for both staff and students to see it. It's very important. We're gonna put desks back into the classroom, approximately about 10 desks, gives us 28, 29 desks in a classroom. We're gonna add, excuse me, we're gonna add some more tables into the science labs, and add chairs. It would give us about 28, 29, 30 chairs, opportunities for students to be in those chairs. Some of the other rooms, the art room, the tech rooms, we have to look at those as well. So we did a breakdown of the courses. We have 15 courses currently that have over 28 students on the roster. Excuse me. Out of those 15, we have five traditional classrooms, five sections, we're gonna look at those. Very important to get that information, that data for those students who are gonna choose remote, or choose in-person, because that could help us, whether we have to find an alternative setting for those classes. The other 10 are all non-traditional classrooms, here in the auditorium, we have the gymnasium, PE classes, and we have the band classes. We're gonna maintain one-way hallways, one-way stairwells, our senior privileges are gonna stay intact. It's very important right now, our students are doing a great job following the directionals of each floor, following the arrows, following the stairwells. That's not gonna change. Yeah, it does take, you know, for somebody who's in 342 and has a class in 338, they may have to walk around a little bit, as I tell them all the time in the hallway, just get those steps in, you know, use your Fitbit, get your steps in, you'll be fine. So we're gonna maintain all that. The big thing that we discussed was remote students. We've decided to keep remote students in the rosters that they're on. They're gonna stay with their classes, they're gonna stay with their teachers. It's very difficult for our junior and senior high school students, who have eight different classes, to have a remote teacher. So we're still gonna ask our amazing teachers to continue doing the simultaneous teaching. Hopefully, the numbers will reduce from remote to in-person, so it becomes a little easier. But I think, you know, the way they're working right now, it truly is amazing. They're working hard, they do a great job, the breakout sessions, the technology they're using, the sharing of their screens, it really is, it's an impressive scene. I had the opportunity last week to spend, I have a college-age daughter who's remote, and I tell you, our staff far outweighs her two professors that I got to watch. They kept messing up with the technology. Our staff is so fully involved now, from those who started at, novices at the beginning of the year, are very incredible experts right now with our technology. The cafeteria, obviously, we went to the hired gun, we went to Ms. Vaughn, because we felt the best way to figure out how we're gonna add more students and reduce the footage amongst students was to talk to Mrs. Vaughn. And she's been amazing. We've been measuring things out, her and Ms. Anderson have been working, trying to figure out if we have to add tables. Superintendent was kind enough to purchase those long tables with the Viking on them. We're gonna put those back in the cafeterias. We can fit about four chairs, four stools in those, that gives us three of them, so we can add more students into that. Obviously, we have the patio, believe it or not, well, except for the snow. Students are still going outside to eat lunch, so we have that opportunity. That was always a senior privilege. However, this year with the pandemic, we decided to open it up to all classes, seventh, eighth, all the way to 12th grade. I know the 12th graders, the seniors, were a little upset about that, but it gave us an opportunity for everybody to eat outside. We're gonna follow the CDC restaurant guidelines, which provides, the only time the mask comes off is when they're actually eating. And we figured out, we calculated that the exposure of eating lunch during our blocks is less than 15 minutes. So that was very important to us, because we felt like if there was, for tracing purposes, it gives an opportunity to know. Most of the students sit with their friends, we know where they're sitting, we know who they are, we can identify them. But based on the reduction in spacing, we do feel that it's gonna be a less than a 15-minute exposure to each other when it comes to lunch.
What distance are they from each other when they're eating? And what distance are they from each other when they're eating?
Once we come back, we're gonna redo, we're gonna add a few more individuals to
the tables.
So that space will be reduced?
That's what we're working on now. So we're hoping to add two or three more seats to each table, round tables, about eight seats total.
Why off the reading screen?
Round tables, well, it's, the one thing is, the students don't want them. They want no part of having that, because it isolates them from each other. Second thing is that it's very difficult, the way we have it, the way we have it set up now, we don't need the screens, because they're all at six feet. So we don't, we don't need the screens in between each other, just like in the classroom, we don't need screens in between the desks. So that's why we went that way.
But they're not gonna be at six feet?
No, that's why we're saying the exposure's gonna be less than 15 minutes, because they're only gonna be, you're taking the masks down when they're eating. And once the weather permitting, once the weather turns better, we're gonna, we have that whole patio area, we're gonna ask for tents to be outside, more tables outside, so more kids can go eat outside, and space out a lot more. And the other thing that we have is, we have six lunches. So we can space out our student population based on those six lunches. So that's important to us.
When we get back on the stage, I think this is a topic we should circle back to a little bit. I think there is some, worthy some discussion about that. If we have the ability to provide screens, I don't know necessarily whether the kids want them or not should be a determining factor.
No, it's not determination. It's more of, you know, at the high school level, the screens are a little more detrimental to them at this time. And at six feet, we felt we didn't need the screens. It's something that we discuss. We have the screens, it's just a matter of whether or not, again, we're working with Mrs. Vaughn, whether or not we're gonna use the screens, so. But based on the number of minutes within a lunch block, having it spread out over six lunches, if we have to add another one, we add another one. But right now, based on the current schedule that we have, six lunches, we can space out the staffing. The other thing is, we really need to get an accurate data of who's choosing remote. It gives us a chance to look at those students, to look at those classes that are first, second, third, all the way to sixth lunch, what classes are going down there, and how many students we have. Right now, we can, we can fit up to 135 students at six feet. So if we reduce it to four feet, or even four and a half feet, we can add probably 20, 25 more students in there, which actually may be too many, based on the amount of lunches that we have. So those are all data points that we need, but we'll need some information before we make those decisions. That's why I mentioned it was a work in progress. So we're still working on trying to collect the information before we make the final decisions.
Obviously, the lower grades in cafeteria, you know, in larger group settings, there's need for more student monitoring of the students at the high school level, though. It doesn't go unnoticed either. Meaning, you know, I had one of my sons tell me today that, you know, someone came up to him at lunch to, you know, say something, they didn't have a mask on, so, you know, someone, you know, there's very close monitoring, even at the high school level, that everything is as it should be. I don't want that to be kind of misinterpreted.
True.
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, the people that we have in there, and the students that we have, again, the last bullet point is, everybody's been amazing, staff and students have been amazing following our protocols. You know, one of the things is, once we do return to in-person, we've decided we're gonna have class meetings. We haven't had class meetings together, except for the seniors. We want to reiterate protocols, especially the cafeteria, the hallways, you know, we'll do, you know, daily reminders, or bi-weekly reminders of, you know, utilizing masks, things like that. So we definitely want to make sure we're staying on top of it. Thank you. And again, the outdoor seating we mentioned. So, next slide, please. So our instructional model for four days in-person, we're very similar to what Andrew mentioned. So a four-day in-person model, we're gonna allow students to choose remote if they like. Like earlier, the slide, 233 of those families, our students are currently remote. Again, we're not changing them, we're not taking them and removing them from those rosters, they're gonna remain with their teachers, so nothing changes for them, it's consistency. It was very important to our team that we stayed consistent. Again, teachers are doing normal teacher stuff, they are responsible. The biggest thing is attendance. I think the attendance has been such a nightmare this year up at the junior and senior high school. We really have to, we need that information, we need that form, we need that, we're asking families to set, provide that form for us, to declare what they would like to do. Even if they have questions, please call us, we can answer as much as we can. If we don't have the answer at that moment, we will get that answer to you as quickly as we can. But we need that data, so we can continue working on this model and perfecting it.
So you said something asked me if we can one back or remote, is that what you referred?
We will. The plan is to send a Google form to all the families to ask them to declare, at least, you know, give us some information, so we know we can look at those five classes, the 15 classes. Do we have to look for an alternative setting? Do we have, can we keep them in there? Those five classes on the earliest slide that I mentioned, that are over 28, if everything stayed currently, all five classes have enough remote students, we wouldn't have to worry about it. So that's the information that we're doing. We're pouring through all 800 sections during semester two, and we are looking at every roster. So that's what we're trying to do. The team really pushed for a Wednesday remote, talking to students and staff. Wednesdays are a less-stressed day. It's one teaching model, it's every, the entire class at the same time, it provides a break, like Andrew mentioned, it provides that instant mask break for students, it gives them, you know, an opportunity to really work through the technology. Everybody has the same instruction model. So Wednesdays became very important. So transitionally, we're looking at Wednesdays for the next few weeks after we come in person, just for a transition period for students and staff. So again, as, like Andrew, currently, we don't have a set date like Kate does, but we do have, we want to look at that, saying, okay, currently, we're gonna go to a four-day in-person, one day full-remote. The only difference with the remote schedule, Alexa, could you click on that for me, the remote schedule? This is our current schedule for our remote day. So anytime we have a situation like last Monday, we could go Monday, where we had snow and it turned into a remote day, the teachers and the administrative team came up with this schedule. The reason why we came up with this schedule is because when we first had the remote day back in December, and we had a 200-minute lunch block, and everybody had, we had six lunches, and every, the students were taking different lunches, it really didn't make sense. So we wanted to incorporate an equal amount of time, minutes, within every period. So we decided on a Wednesday, if once this model comes into play, and if agreed upon and supported, we would use this schedule, rather than, the current schedule on Wednesdays is, all eight blocks are meeting for 20 minutes. 20 minutes is a very short time. Believe it or not, after attendance is taken, 10 minutes of attendance, a little quick discussion, and all of a sudden, okay, you gotta move on to the next class. The day ends at 10:55 for students, as far as the synchronous part of it, and then everyone's supposed to go to asynchronous. And we all know that the asynchronous part isn't exactly fully asynchronous. It's turned into, it's a half-day. It's not a half-day, it's a full day. So we're looking at the model changing to be a full day. And it would, I think the continuity of our schedule, this would just fit right into the schedule. So if today was day six, tomorrow, Wednesday, would be day seven. Come back on Thursday, in-person, it's a day eight. So that's a very important thing. So they're gonna be able to be in their classes, everybody has the same lunch. And then we added this asynchronous time, so students can get up. It's gonna be an opportunity for students to reach out to their teachers for academic support. We still have Viking block that also provides academic support for students. I think, and the teachers really were looking for, our staff was really looking for, an opportunity for common planning. This gives them that opportunity for common planning every Wednesday. They can get with their colleagues, their departments, their teams, they can work through different things, they can have a working lunch, which was very important. Again, this schedule was created by staff, and it was approved, and we've only done it once, but we got some pretty good reviews on it.
So is the expectation with moving to full-remote? Four days, at least initially while they're phasing in, does this Wednesday remote schedule take effect as soon as we move to the four days? Because this gives me a greater confidence in the four days and the remote schedule, because I, as a parent, feel, at least at the high school level, the Wednesday day is hit or miss, depending on so many different factors.
Correct.
Yep, this would be part of the new model that we're going to. So, and again, this is something that we really debated, spent probably a little bit too much time on, about the remote Wednesday versus in-person Wednesday. We, the, we decided as a group that, okay, I think if we're gonna do it, let's utilize the schedule that's already there. Again, it's, you know, if we, Alexa, if you can go back to the slide, I apologize. Again, the goal here for that schedule, we talked about equal minutes, we talked about CPT, it provides both synchronous and asynchronous, the academic support between Viking block and the asynchronous period, and also a greater continuity in the schedule as a whole. Right now, it's like, the same, it seems like the same, every odd day, one, three, five, and seven, it's usually A through D, and then every even day. So every Friday is always an even day, so it's the same group of students, you know, whether it's, you know, it's just, so I think it provides that continuity of, you know, we have an eight-day schedule, you know, right now, it's four days, it's even. If we can add that fifth day, it rotates a lot better. And we have one more slide, I believe. So as I said, this is a working document. So some of the concerns and discussions that we are currently having, and we're going to continue to have, we talked about transportation, the big thing they kept asking about transportation, we stressing, that is a district, they are working on it, superintendent is working on it. Vaccinations, they were asking about vaccinations, again, state level, as soon as they're available, we're gonna get the link. As soon as our, the end of phase one for the rollout of vaccinations, our support staff got the link immediately, and have, some of them have, if not all of them, I don't know for sure, but some of them already have their first vaccination. The pool testing, which they've asked for as a staff, we are fully involved now, thank you. PPE, we talked about the amount of PPE they have, every staff member has two masks, N95 mask, a cloth mask, the Viking mask, the face shield, and every, we have the trifold, the sneeze guards, available to every staff member. They all have one, we do have more if they need it. So they're fully aware of that. We talked about windows. Here at the high school, because we have a new filtration, we have a filtration system, it's actually better to shut the door and keep the windows shut for the airflow, so we're gonna work with Mr. Kylie about that, because I know reducing the spacing is a little more tricky, is a little trickier. So we talked about windows opening, but then I said, I gotta check, because I think Mr. Kylie says, when the windows are shut and the doors are shut, the airflow is much better in the building. So that's, again, these are all working components. We talked about outdoor setup, possibly getting a couple more tents outside, if possible, weather permitting. The biggest concern that we talked about today was the congestion, to try to decongest our mornings, because our, the students cannot move in the building until 7:15. The doors open at 6:45. The doors open at six forty-five. A lot of students hang out here in the lobby. The bus students hang out in the calf. We push them into the cafeteria. So, we're going to try to come up with some different ideas, opening up the auditorium. Let seventh and eighth grade come to the auditorium. The cafeteria is still open. We have a great food, a breakfast program. That's still available. The, the other question today we discussed, let's open the building. Let's open the building at seven o'clock and let them go to their classrooms. You know, a lot of staff are already here. Let them, let them, let them do their thing and, and walk around. We'll probably need some more eyes on different levels, but, but I think, you know, that's an option. It's, it's a discussion that we're having, tried to, to decongest those areas, especially in the morning. Attendance, as I mentioned earlier, the attendance is a big deal. With the in-person, right now, our, our in-person students, weather's bad, you're not driving today. All right, well, I can just jump on online. It becomes, it becomes very difficult because right now, our attendance code are in-person, present, in-person, absent, remote, present, remote, absent, and then all the tardies with all four of those. So, it becomes a little bit more of a challenge. With the new model, we talk about possibly, if you've declared in-person, if you, your family that chosen in-person, and you're not present in-person, you're absent. You're absent for that period. And it's something that, as the administrative team will look at if we have to at the end of the year, but that's something that's very important to us. It's not, you know, we haven't decided if we're going to make it an option where they can just say, we're remote. The only, yeah, obviously, any circumstances such as somebody who's quarantining, we, we would make sure that they, they go full-remote.
My question, but just, so, if I'm a high school junior and I'm in-person and for whatever reason on Tuesday, I don't come into school, there are kids in the class who are fully remote, who have the ability to log in and participate with the class. Would these students be denied that ability, or would they still be able to log in but marked absent? How would that be handled?
We, no, we'd deny them the opportunity to log into a classroom, but we may end up marking them absent depending on the, what, whatever discussion we have with staff. That's, that's one of the talking points that I asked them to get me some feedback on. Because it is difficult for, for teachers. We're still asking them to simultaneously teach, and the attendance becomes a bear. So...
I can give a form withholding kids to an attendance standard. I just don't want to deny their access to a class that we have the ability to give them.
Correct. Yes. And that's, again, it's all a work in progress. Thank you.
And as a parent, I personally feel that if there is a strong attendance policy, if you make the decision to be fully in-person, I really feel that that needs to be set as an expectation. To Tim's point, not to be denied the opportunity, obviously, to log in remotely, but it can't be this back and forth, oh, today I'm going to be remote. If you're full in-person, I really feel like you need to be full in-person, unless, of course, you're quarantining.
Yes.
There are mitigating circumstances that we would allow. We would make sure, we, we explain that to the parents and to the student, like, okay, we're, we're making you stay out, so you, you have to, or you have to stay out, even if it's somebody who had surgery. No, you, you can jump on remotely. It doesn't make sense for you to get an elevator key if you can't, if you're not as mobile. So, those, there's a lot of mitigating circumstances. But, it's, it's the back and forth. It's, it's, right now, it's very easy for students to say, yeah, I missed my bus, or I, I just didn't want to get up early, so I'm just going to stay home and jump on remotely. And, you know, as a teacher, you're fully focused on your assignments, your lessons, your activities, and you just, you randomly see somebody who should be in-person is remote. We don't catch it till later on. And, and, and poor Mrs. Furia, she spends hours, hours upon hours, working on attendance. So, we're trying to make it, simplify it, but also hold students to, you know, a little bit of a, a kind of, a higher accountability. So, again, we mentioned talking about updating seating charts. One of the suggestions is have a formatted seating chart, so it's just plug-in, plug-and-play for staff, which is fine. I can create, we can create something digitally for staff, for classrooms. Reiteration of procedures, we want to have those class meetings. That's very important for us to reiterate the protocols, especially with the cafeteria. More students in the calf, more students in the hallways. We're really going to focus on having class assemblies. Increased communication, great topic we had today about providing communication, not just to families, but to staff, to just be as transparent as we can. So, that's going to be the goal, to be very transparent. And, and Chromebooks, one of the, you know, obviously, with some of our technological issues and running a Google Meet and trying to show a, share your screen, everything gets slowed down, and a lot of students don't charge their devices. So, we thought, well, let, maybe we can, we do have charging stations in the cafeteria that people don't realize. We can use that as a charging station during lunch. We can set up something, maybe look at something in, in classrooms or designated areas for students to charge their devices during, you know, during the course of the day. So, that is, that is where we're at for our plan.
Nice job, Jeff. Thank you. Yes. When, when are you looking to start this? I didn't see a start.
We are going off of the other two schools. So, we are going to fall in line for wherever, whatever dates are decided. We, we know that on the third week, that's our, that's our chance to jump in.
So, do you have something to share?
Jeff, have you looked at, um, one of the things my daughter's school does, and, I mean, they have still keep these there, is staggering class transitions because of legal classes. So, you know, they release from the end of hallway forward in, you know, like two-minute intervals.
It's a question that we're having right now with the team. I think a few people mentioned, it just becomes chaotic and loses, we lose that time on learning in classes. If we're going to have eight, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred students in here, it becomes a little bit more of a challenge, but it's something we are going to look at. So, Karen?
I just want to clarify, the full-day Wednesday, is that starting when there's the full in-person?
Yes.
Whenever we start this new program, this new learning model, that's when we would do that.
Any other questions? Again, thank you.
The lights just moved out of the ceiling. Thank you.
We can continue to be quite honest on the committee has any questions, let all the female staff, this is a draft right now, the form that's going to be going out to all families. With that form, we also wanted each building's plan, so parents can see what the plans are for each of the buildings. But the form will be asking questions about whether they're going to maintain in the current model that they're working in, whether they're looking to move one way or another to, to come in if they're fully remote, or, or choose fully remote. It's also questions about busing needs. And lastly, I've been in communication with Mrs. Verasso over the last week. We do have availability before and after care for those needs that may change, so that's on the survey as well. But we did want to make sure that when we put that survey out, we gave parents as much information as possible about what the changes are going to look like and the timing of those.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do you have your numbers of total students and number of remote students? If you, if you don't, you can give it to me later. I'm just curious as...
So, I, I think a sensible way to go about this, rather than just having a, a random round and back and forth, is I'd like to address the plans of each of the three schools one by one, and then give members of the board an opportunity to ask questions. We can go, we can start with Ellen and just work our way around the table, and, and that way, everyone has a chance to, what's that?
Amanda.
So, we won't start with Ellen. We'll start with Amanda, and then we'll come back to Ellen. In that way, everyone has a chance to ask a question about all three of the plans. Jean, I, I think your point about the survey, I think, including the plans is key. Parents need to understand what they're voting on. I was actually adding note to mention to Jeff that I think it's important for parents to understand that they're, we're asking them to bring kids back at three feet at the high school. I think that's a, you know, parents need to understand when they're making their decision that that's the distance. And I can see some parents having concerns about that, so I think it's really important for them to understand that.
And it, and it will vary depending on the, the rooms within the buildings, but you're right. For parents to know that there will be instances where students will be at three feet.
Sure. Starting first...
In the cafeteria.
We'll get to that in a second. Getting, starting first with Central. So, I know we talked about Central last week, but hearing Kate's plan, we'll start. Amanda, did you have any comments or question about Central?
I just, I'm thrilled about the remote teachers. I think that that, I agree with both principles, but I think your plans sound great with the remote teachers. I think that's going to be really great for remote students, and I don't have any other questions at this time. So, thank you. Thank you very much. So comprehensive.
Teresa?
No, I just want to thank you, Mrs. Byrne, and actually, Mr. Gentile and Mr. Sylvia. I cannot imagine the work that went into all three of these plans. So, I appreciate the, the presentations, and, Mrs. Byrne, you always do such a nice job. So, thank you.
Kate, I just want to mention how much I enjoyed, we got, we got some particularly pointed parent feedback this last week about the remote plans and the idea of taking kids away from their teacher that they've had all year long. And I understand that, you know, I, I, I think that's a really valid concern. Kids have grown accustomed to a certain routine, a certain person, a certain, you know, group. But I also think that, um, parents, you know, we need to see the bigger picture in that our teachers are, are carrying a tremendous load of teaching both at the same time. And I, my, they've been doing it, you know, that, my, I've been more and more impressed with the job they've been doing as the school year has gotten longer and they've gotten more accustomed to it. And I, I think that asking them to do a full in-class plus remote kids is frankly just asking too much. And so, while I understand and can totally validate these parents' frustration, I think if they want to see high-quality education, engaged teachers, and differentiation towards the needs of those kids, they have to, you can't have both. You, you have to accept that that's the model that we're going to provide, and that's the support we're going to provide our kids. So, I was happy to see your thought put into that, and, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. And the, the teachers felt strongly about that same piece and that same component. And we want to make sure that that transition, for fuller modes, is gradual for that same piece, right, for that same reason, that it's thoughtful, that they still feel connected, and they don't completely lose that or sever that relationship. That's why we'll maintain that throughout the year.
Yep.
With those live engagement opportunities. And making sure that the full-remote teacher that comes on has an opportunity to get to know them as learners before they even come to her.
Hmm.
But, so yes, we definitely recognize that, for some families, that was a, a big change. Maintaining the reading specialist, just to highlight that, they've been working with the reading specialist, the fully-remote students, all year, so that's going to stay. And the other components that we've had for fully-remote students, they've all had the opportunity to participate in social groups for fully-remote students. That will also stay. So, all of those things still remain. It's almost, you're getting a new group of friends together, learning together, but you still haven't lost the others.
Well, thank you for that. Teresa?
Um, well, you have my one question. You can get, you can email me that. I don't care, because I'm just curious.
And so, are you looking for total numbers or breakdown by numbers? Like, I can let you know, like, first grade, there's eighteen remote students. There's thirteen in second grade, and there's currently eighteen in kindergarten.
That are remote?
That are fully remote.
And do you know what your total student count is for the whole school?
Well, I'll get you that number.
Come on, Kate, you don't have a...
Not a total sheet.
Come on, really, Kate.
It's actually, it's gone down. It's, it's lower than they spend a long time, for a lot of reasons. But, um, the, the other component about the, the size here, we have had many families reach out that are fully remote, who are, are being inquisitive about returning.
That's great.
Who would like to come back, who are actually asking to see if we can try to give them opportunity to come back before we have everybody back full in-person, so they can get those maybe two days in a week for their child to sort of get their feet wet and to come on back. So, I've had five families reach out to me this week, since last, since your meeting last week. And since then, I think I've had maybe one or two families, you know, bring pause to think about, I don't know if I want to increase the two days to more than that. So, there might be some flux that we see.
Right.
So, obviously, the participation survey that goes out will be very helpful. But, you know, we are seeing that families have recognized the power of the relationships that they've created with their teachers, and they always envisioned coming back towards the spring, to some kind of in-person learning. So, this might be the transition they were looking for.
I, I, I think your plan is amazing, as every plan you always show us is.
Well, you're very kind, and I have fifteen devoted teachers that helped create this plan.
And we thank them.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I do, too. They've been working and doing amazing things all year.
Yes, thank you for your, um, these plans look great. I was happy to hear that you have two candidates for the remote teacher positions, so that's great, too. In light of, this is just a question, playing devil's advocate.
Absolutely.
In light of the great possibility of the potential delay in the vaccine, would it be beneficial to postpone by a week or two in advance instead of waiting until we know that the vaccine is delayed?
Say that again? Postpone what? I'm sorry.
Ellen, I think you need to speak a little louder because you have two masks.
Are you asking me to make that determination now, assuming?
Oh, I was just wondering, well, it, in light of the great potential that the vaccine's going to be delayed, I was wondering if it, it would behoove us to postpone by a week or two instead of...
So, I actually have a plan for that. I was going to get to that, you know, and let me just talk about that super quick right now, is, you know, we, we had our meeting last week, and we laid out a plan for the month of, you know, February, and, and doing the math in my head and seeing how the state was progressing, I felt good at that time about, you know, the idea that by week three and week four, teachers are going to be ready. The governor did not help that goodwill on Friday when he announced that there were still two hundred thousand people in group one that needed to be vaccinated, and we'll just leave it open for a few more days, which, again, fine, great, I get it, that my group needs the vaccine. That doesn't give me great confidence that we're going to get through group two and then open it to teachers in the next two weeks. So, I, I was going to mention at tonight's meeting that we should come to our meeting on the twenty-third, I think it is, prepared to make a motion and vote to delay at that point, unless there is a, a date, if for some reason something changes. If we know that on that Tuesday, that on Thursday, the teachers are going to get vaccinated, there's not a need for that. But, at that point, when we meet in two weeks, it'll only be five calendar days until we get to March first. So, you know, I think in the back of our heads, we need to keep an open mind when we come to that meeting, that if there's not a date on the books in the next few days after that, that we need to be prepared to act on that and just move to, to push it out a little bit. So, I, I appreciate that your plan kind of took that into consideration. You seemed to already have in your head that there is a good chance that could happen. I don't feel the need to act on that now because this situation is so fluid, we could get to phase, step three in a week and a half. I mean, who knows? So, we can act on it before it becomes an issue and still adequately communicate it to families that, that we're, we're waiting to...
Right. If Johnson &amp; Johnson gets, um, whatever that approval's called.
Yep.
We could get a vote loaded in. You, you just don't know.
Ellen, I agree with you that, that, that there's a good chance that's going to happen, but I don't think we need to decide that tonight. I think we still push forward with the, the dates and times that we had in mind.
Is five calendar days enough time?
If we can send out a, I mean, we could have a statement ready to go to parents that night after the meeting, that Tuesday night, saying, you know, that our, our letter did say contingent upon teacher vaccinations. It was very clear that that was a asterisk on that date. And we can say on the twenty-third, we are not able to secure teacher vaccinations by March first. We are going to wait till March eighth or March fifteenth to, to begin that reopening process. I, I don't think we need to decide that tonight. It's two and a half weeks out from now. A lot can change, but I don't think we're waiting too long to decide it by 23rd. The group feels differently. We can talk about that, but I just, I feel like that's an adequate rollout done.
Because I think everybody's aware it can change.
Correct.
Like, if we were sitting here saying, where am I, first, no matter what, and then on the 23rd or 5th or whatever the date is? Oops, sorry. But we'd be very upfront that that date is a little iffy now.
Yeah.
So, I think it does give us enough time because we're being upfront about the fact that that date isn't...
I think we need to keep the forward momentum.
Exactly.
And it's subject to change, as is everything that has been that case since last year.
Right, because the momentum is strong, and if you kind of already pushed the date, you kind of say, oh, well, I get an extra week and...
I'll be as frustrated as anyone if we have to push it out because there's nothing I hate more than telling people a date and then saying, never mind. But, you know, I think at this point, Ellen, does that make sense? That, you know, we have it in our heads that it's a possibility, but I just don't know that tonight is when we need to decide that. Sorry, I jumped in on your question.
No, that's okay, because ultimately, part of that would really, I would go to the superintendent to also indicate, you know.
Yeah. So, but your plan has the flexibility built in for those possibilities, which I think is key right now.
You're welcome.
Mitchell School. Mr. Gentile, we'll start with Amanda.
God. I think my question, kind of contingent on that last discussion, was, and this is maybe a discussion for the committee as well, the 15th date. Is that, that seems to be just planning to get logistics in place. Is that also, it is X days or leaving time after Central School is phased in? Does that play into the date that you have here?
So, the date took into consideration a couple of different things. One is, we were going off the initial dates that were provided of the 1st and the 8th and the 15th. As we evaluated the calendar and discussed that with our group, starting the week of conferences was a concern for a variety of reasons. Starting the week after conferences provided that opportunity for some very direct communication with teachers and parents. Additionally, we did kind of anticipate that there may be some delay in ensuring that teachers were vaccinated. And from a standpoint of trying to get plans moving, I felt like that date of the 15th was more likely. So, that's where that came from. Obviously, based on the direction from you all and from the superintendent, we would certainly adapt as is necessary.
So, you would be okay pushing out. You just would never want to push back. Is that fair?
Push back, not earlier?
Like, you wouldn't want to go to the 8th, but you'd be okay if you had to go to the 20th, so?
Okay, in the sense that I want to make sure I'm following whatever directives I'm given, but I certainly want to get this plan going as soon as we can.
Completely agree. But I meant because of vaccine.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Liz, is there a strategic, I understand when you lay out the plan that, you know, starting with one school one week and another school the next, but when push comes to shove, do you have to stagger them out? I mean, I understand from your office, it helps to focus on one school per week. But it doesn't really matter, I would think, to Jeff whether Andrew's school starts on the same day as him or not. So, if we're able to set a day, and I'm not saying we start the whole district one day, I understand. But I'm saying, like hypothetically, if Kate started on the 8th, is there a reason that the Mitchell and the high school couldn't both start on the 15th?
They were both starting on 15th.
Oh, Jeff said he was following a week after week.
No, we could start, we, if Kate goes in on the 8th, we could start Mitchell and junior senior on the 15th. I mean, I think the only potential logistics that, you know, we would have to take into consideration is busing might be a little bit slower just because we're bringing more kids in transport and the delay from one building getting their route done to the other. But as far as how the two buildings are going to operate, they're independent of each other. So, bringing the numbers in on the same week wouldn't...
Okay. And I'm not saying that's what we're doing. I mean, I'm just saying hypothetically, there's not a reason we have to stagger them out as much as we were originally looking at.
No, we just, you know, we felt as if, you know, we get Central in. Central is, I mean, kindergarten usually starts all by itself.
Yep.
And the district almost stops on that day for kindergarten, that following week when she begins. I mean, everybody just comes to a halt. I mean, even the high school. It's very quiet in the district. It's very slow in the district. We wait for kindergarten to start. This year would be, or this time, it would be different. So, we thought, let's give Kate an opportunity, let's give the Central School an opportunity. They've been here for five days. They've been in the building, those pre-K and Ks. Let's give one and two a shot to get in, to get acclimated to the five days, to get the specials, everybody in place. Give Kate an opportunity, and Mrs. Nichols an opportunity, just to slow it down, see what was happening. And if we needed to send some COVID monitors, maybe from Mitchell School over on a day that he didn't need them, we could do that. And I think we were just slowing it down to get it moving. I think Mr., our thought process today, what my understanding was, we were starting Mitchell School and the high school on the 15th. And I think what Jeff was saying, that if, like, he has to push back, he pushes back. If he doesn't, he's going to come in on the 15th. The high school is a different animal compared to the other two. He's got, the high school has 150 kids that are driving. That opens up spots on the bus. Mitchell School is going to be the school, the transportation. We know will need either optional 14th bus or a different thought process and solution to, you know, pickups, maybe, you know, different areas moving around, which we don't want to do because all those routes have already been determined.
I realize that I actually got away from the process. We said we paused. I cut off.
Well, I just, it's part of her transportation. That's the only reason. Have we surveyed yet to see how many parents would be willing to drive should the need be there?
So, that will be part of the participation form. They will ask that question about the busing needs.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Did you have other questions?
No, I just wanted to say, again, a really comprehensive plan. I think it's clear to me that a lot of staff and teachers participated in this planning. It's clear from what you're speaking of, the experiences you're speaking of, and I just appreciate that a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, I'm just, I'm sorry. Get it right at one of these points. I am the chair. I'll figure it out.
So, Mr. Gentile, I, too, just want to thank you, having worked with you on the past on parent council. I know you put a lot of thought and planning into this. So, I really appreciate everything that you've taken into consideration. And I hope parents realize, just like Mrs. Byrne and Mr. Sylvia, that everyone's working really, really hard to make this a safe plan for our kids. And it's time for our kids to be back. So, this is a hope-rising process.
Andrew, I just want to say, you know, I'm glad you were able to be with us tonight to talk about this. I know that originally, we had on the agenda last week to vote on Mitchell, and I was nervous about that, not having the opportunity to ask questions or hear the plan. And I feel a lot better about this, having heard from you. I do want to keep on the table the idea of coming back to Wednesdays as the spring goes on because I think, I think your reasons for wanting to keep them now are perfectly valid. I think as we get more into the spring and the teachers get back into the routine of teaching full-time classes as we move beyond whatever chaos MCAS is going to be this spring when we get into that last stretch of the year, I think there's a real opportunity for extra in-person days of learning. And, you know, I'd love to hear back from you at that point about if that's something we can move towards, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, short of that, I thank you for this. I think this answers a lot of my questions, a lot of my concerns.
Glad to hear that.
Great plan, Andrew. I really like it. I was actually more nervous about the Mitchell School because I hadn't really seen a lot about it, but I felt much more comfortable with the Mitchell School. But I do have a question because, Kate, your teachers are coming in five days or kids in front of them five days. Your teachers are four and four. Is there, was there any concern among staff? I don't even know which one of you could take this question.
Well, I'll speak from Central School's perspective. As we started going through this process with our committee, I got a, you know, a little heads up from Mr. Gentile about what was happening in his building and what their thoughts were. And made sure that the Central School teachers, we had a thorough conversation about our current model and where we wanted to see students. When we talk about five full days eventually, right? Like, we don't get that March 1st date, but what does that really look like and sound like? And making sure that they understood that the other buildings might be advocating to maintain those room at Wednesdays a little longer and talk about the rationale why they might be doing that. But then to talk to my staff to say, giving up those remote Wednesdays and having kids in person, let's talk about that. They were adamant, and they could defend it because we had decided that on Thursday. We were going in a great motion. We heard a little bit about Mitchell School's plan on Friday. I wanted to make sure that they were completely aware that they were advocating to sort of keep Wednesdays right now. And they were still, I was so proud of them. They defended and say, yeah, no, we're okay giving away Wednesdays because we can better differentiate for our students. They're going to be in person with us. We relinquish all of the hours and hours it takes to create those digital asynchronous slides, which, you know, people may or may not appreciate, but it takes, it's painstaking, the amount of detail that needs to go into that. And Mitchell School is still maintaining that. Mitchell School is still maintaining that. They're going to help and support the remote teacher. The remote teacher will be able to access that. My remote teacher will be the one creating that with the support from lead teachers and reading specialists. But the classroom teachers are relinquishing that. So, for them, the far better trade-off is to have their students in front of them for five full days, for them to be in the building, five full days with them to meet their needs, differentiate, allow the full-remote teacher to have kids in one learning mode so they can do the same thing. So, no, they were...
Well, that's great.
Super clear. And I wanted to make sure they knew, too, because I know that was a contentious point at some, you know, at some point during the year about the remote Wednesdays and the amount of time needed to plan. They needed that time legitimately to do the amazing things that they've been doing.
Oh, absolutely.
But they're happy to relinquish that, to improve their in-person instruction, and to, they'll come to school every Wednesday because it's what's best for kids in our model. We're, you know, we have three-year-olds and we have up to eight-year-olds. We're an early childhood center, very different from the Mitchell School model, asynchronous learning, screen time. You want to limit that the most you can for our age group. We've always known that. We've also known that we've had to put up with that with our hybrid model because that's where we are with the pandemic.
And pre-K, there's no cheese, right? Pre-K...
Pre-K will stay the same.
Is what it is.
Correct. They're already into their full schedules. We do have some remote preschoolers. They'll still stay remote with their current teacher, the way they currently run.
Do you have any other questions, Andrew?
I'm good.
Ellen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gentile. It's a great plan. I was wondering, and I don't want to assume, so I'm going to ask the question. With the one-day remote on Wednesday, will the remote students and the full-in-person students come together in a remote class, or will they still stay separate with the remote teacher versus the in-person teacher?
Yep. So, for instructional purposes on those Wednesdays, the remote students would be working with the remote teacher that they'd be working with on the other days. In addition to that, however, they would come together with their classmates for a live specials class that they would have on Wednesdays, all as a group remotely. And in addition to that, they would, like they would on the other days, they would join their homeroom for either a morning meeting or a closing meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you all.
Junior, senior high school. Amanda?
Thank you again. I know, as we know, it's a lot of work. I know you mentioned there were some pickups with scheduling, and so, I think you said you had nine members on your task force right now. I would love to see some more folks involved. I'm sure that they're going out to their colleagues and bringing some stuff back. But I would love to see that. And I think I like the idea of at least minimum right now during this transition, the Wednesdays remote at both schools. I think that's really important. I think we overwhelmingly, I know definitely heard support from teachers for that, and I think this will help the transition. And I like the remote schedule. I think that sounds really great for consistency. I think the big question I have, and I know we were talking about, is the cafeteria. And I know that's still in planning. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about it.
So, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm coming at this from a little bit more of a relevant perspective as a parent. I've actually spent a few chunks of time the past couple of weeks at the high school. So, just a couple of my observations. I'm very, very impressed with how the safety protocols are in place and followed. I mean, just today, when I was leaving, coming to the school, there was someone from the janitorial staff wiping down the whole front entrance. And then when I was leaving, there was another, I think it was Ed was wiping down when I was leaving. I'm sorry. And then there was someone else, as I was entering the main office, wiping down the surface of the front desk. And when I was here last week, and I needed to go down to guidance, it's a one-way coming from this way, and I just wanted to go down. So, Mrs. Furia went, checked the hallway, made sure there were no students. And she said, you know, guidance is only a couple of doors down, so go ahead because it is one-way traffic. So, I am more than confident with all of the safety measures being followed here at the high school. So, I don't have any concerns on that level. And as far as the lunchroom, and I understand there's concerns, I personally feel, as a parent of two high school kids, they're less touchy-feely than the younger kids. They're not sharing food. They're not, you know, not that we don't have COVID monitors at the two younger schools. But, again, these kids are going out to restaurants and sitting with their friends. They're being responsible. Our numbers show that they're being responsible. And I don't even think it's a matter of the kids not wanting the screens. I don't think that's even, you know, part of the discussion. I know it was mentioned, but they're high school kids. They're looking for some sense of normalcy. If we're going to follow the CDC guidelines for restaurants, I personally feel comfortable that if you have your mask on when you're not eating, you're in this space for less than 15 minutes, that's kind of what the world's doing right now. So, that's just my comment on that so I don't have to, you know, comment further. And then finally, the attendance. I really like the attendance. I do hope that there is a defined policy in place. I think it's not only going to save a lot of headaches for Mrs. Furia, but I think students need to kind of start coming back into a different level of accountability. We've given them options and some flexibility in these unknown times. But I think that's really important that if they make the decision to be fully in person, they need to be here unless there's extenuating circumstances. And, sorry, one more note. The Wednesdays, I really, really like the new Wednesday remote schedule. It's important for the teachers to still have their reprieve. And I do like how it's working differently at each school because that tells me that the teachers have had a say. Their feedback's been heard. And, you know, you, as the building principals, have worked with your teachers to validate their concerns and give them what they need. So, I don't think it's a negative thing that, you know, Mitchell School is going to have their remote Wednesdays versus Central School not. And at the high school level, I'm very happy to see a new remote Wednesday schedule will be in place for however long it needs to be. So, that's...
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff, I agree about the Wednesdays. I love the schedule. You know, I heard back from some students, you know, in the fall about the Wednesday schedule and, you know, it was hit or miss, and I think this is much more rigorous and robust. And I love the idea of the way you can kind of scaffold it now with the five-day week. So, well done on that. You know, I was looking over your numbers, and I really think the results from your survey are going to be really key in how this moves forward for two reasons. One is, I think parents need to have a full picture of what they're actually voting on. You know, like, they need to understand the risks, the concerns, the, you know, like, what it is they're getting their children into. The thing that jumped out at me, and initially, I was thinking to myself, you know, that there may be some parents who aren't comfortable with the full, you know, reopening and bringing kids closer, may pull their kids remote. But I didn't realize that actually 24% of your school is fully remote already. So, now I'm wondering if some of these parents may have their kids out because it was a more consistent routine for them, and the full opportunity to reopen may bring them back. So, you know, I'm now wondering if you're going to get the openings and the freedom that we were originally thinking, you may get as many parents bringing their kids in and is pulling them out. Correct. So, I'd love to hear, and you don't have to come to another meeting. You guys work long hours. But if you wouldn't mind emailing the committee, maybe the results of that, you know, before we reopen, I'd love to hear, you know, just what that told you from that survey. I'm really concerned about the cafeteria part, and I just want to talk about that for a second. I think this committee has evolved quite a bit from the fall about our feelings on bringing kids back into school and reopening. You know, we were presented a plan in October that I just think a lot of us were not comfortable with, and the idea of bringing kids at closer quarters. And we've seen evidence and seen data and heard stories from other districts about that it is safe to do so and that the timing may be right, the vaccine is here. I feel like I can get on board with so much of what you just presented to us, but I can't get on board with the idea of kids in the cafeteria at less than six feet with no masks and no screens. You know, I don't know why we think we can follow CDC restaurant guidance on this because we're not a restaurant. We're a public school. And the difference is that restaurant guidance was written with the idea that parties were traveling together as a family unit, as people that were already together, eating as a unit and then leaving together in most cases. That's why there's caps on the amount of people that can eat in a restaurant as one group. You know, they don't want 14 people in there because that's bringing multiple groups of people together. You know, a school by default is not cohorts coming in together and traveling together. This is 250 families, 500 families sending their kids in to eat together. And I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the kids being close quarters for, without a mask, without a screen, without any kind of protection when they're in the cafeteria. I would encourage you, frankly, for me to support this, I would need to hear that there's more protection for the kids in the cafeteria. You know, that's a big deal for me.
If I may address.
Sure.
The one thing that I think, and this is my fault, I should have reiterated a little bit more. But remember, the maximum number of students currently at six feet is 135 students.
Okay.
So, if you look at our numbers, yes, we're hoping more students, that 24% reduces and adds more. So, the numbers, the two grades that we have to worry about is grade seven and eight. So, we're still in the planning stages. We're looking at possibly opening up a third lunch for those two groups so we can stagger the seventh and eighth grade to spread out the numbers. So, if you look at the grade seven, for example, if we had all the seventh grade at 152, say 160 students, right now, currently at six feet, it's 135. So, we wouldn't actually go down to full three feet. We would probably go four and a half feet and just add one more seat per table. And we're also adding those longer tables where we can put at least four seats at six feet. So, that does play a huge role. In the other classes, the ninth through 12th grade, we won't have to reduce it to three feet. We're going to keep the cafeteria as is because our numbers are actually under the maximum at six. maximum at six feet.
Okay.
So, and then once the weather does operate, we do have a patio, we have
Sure.
14 picnic tables out back that they can utilize as well. So, it does spread out a lot more.
Okay.
And I apologize that I didn't stress that in any sense.
No, and the other point, well, the other point I was worried about is, I'm not sure even if we wanted to, if we can bring them in that close, because I was, I'd have to go back and look, but I remember the DESI guidance over the summer, I believe, said that if students are unmasked, they must be six-foot distance.
Correct.
And I don't think a screen matters. I don't think it differentiated whether you have a screen or not. You know, this, less than six foot is what dictated a close contact, but I don't think schools have the ability to place kids unmasked at less than six-foot distance. So, that's key to me right now, is that, you know.
Right. We're still working with Mrs. Vaughn, so Mrs. Vaughn, we will not make any decisions on the caf until we have Mrs. Vaughn's stamp of approval. And she is on top of every guideline, every regulation, you know, every component when it comes to food service.
And we won't let this be the deterrent for bringing students back. We'll figure this out and make whatever plans we need to, so that the in-person works. I just want to be clear that
Yep.
We'll never come back to you and say, we can't bring students back because of the lunch issue.
And that's fine. I just wanted to put it on record here that that is a concern for me, and I agree with you. I don't want to hear on March 1st, we tried, but we just couldn't do it, but we're bringing them back anyway. That's, we need to do that. We need to either have a screen, we need to have them protected, spaced out somehow. It can't be at less than six feet without any protection, without masks.
And as soon as we
Do you have an alternative location that you can
There's stuff we're looking into. We have the courtyard, but again, a lot of it has to do with the weather. If we can get, if, once the weather breaks, we can get outside, we can utilize the library during that lunch period, but, again, to purchase the food, to move the food, students would still have to enter the cafeteria. Right now, we have the signage available, we have our monitors in the cafeteria, our staff keeping the kids at a six-foot distance, which we're going to maintain throughout this whole process.
Jeff, one of the things my daughter's school did, and not to keep bringing it up, but it's my frame of experience, is they have like a pre-ordering lunch thing that the kids can, I can tell you what the app is, I can email it to you.
Don't they prepare, they prepare their food as well?
Absolutely. All prepared there, yeah. Well, no, they don't have culinary, but they grow the food, though.
Yeah.
That counts.
Yeah.
And butcher it, but we won't talk about that.
Once we have the exact numbers from the participation, we'll have a better idea of what we're working with.
But I can send you whatever that app is.
Sure. Absolutely.
Because what they were able to do with that is, originally, although they've kind of moved more in, but they had like three lunch locations that they used to make sure that they maintained like in excess of six feet. I know we probably don't have the space for three locations, but it would take away some of that gathering if it was a pre-order of lunch.
True.
Just a thought.
Sure, so do you have other questions?
Again, the cafeteria is my big concern, and I assume, you know, have those nine teachers kind of given you feedback from other teachers?
Oh, yeah, they're constantly getting the feedback from staff. That's what they're tasked on, to bring back some information.
Let me just get to Ellen.
Oh, sorry.
Ellen?
Just a curiosity question. So, were the nine teachers, were they across all grades?
We had, we have one junior high staff member who couldn't make it today, but she's on board, so.
And my, I have a, well, I'm concerned with the cafeteria also. But I have to say, I wasn't sure what to expect as far as the presentation about the high school today. Like, I knew they were going to go with remote teachers for the Central Mitchell, and I wasn't, I was like, I really wasn't sure how you were going to make it work. So, I was happy to hear that you're going to have the remote and have the, you know, the kids, because it would be way too much for them to have to start switching teachers with all the teachers that they have. So, I have one question for all three schools, is if there's a, if there is a family or students that, like, say, come in April, they're either remote or they're full in. If they want to switch, will you let them? I'm going to guess and say probably yes.
So, family, a family that moves in, or a family decides at one point that they want to switch their cohort?
Um, no, well, no. If they want to switch, either come full in if they're remote, or if they want to go remote from
They want to switch them.
Yeah, so we'll follow the same guidelines that we've been following all year, where we ask for that four-to-six-week buffer, so if parents are anticipating that, the sooner they can get that information to the principals, and then giving them that timeframe to work with.
It's not a bad question. Freetown, Lakeville actually did not allow their children to change cohorts once they voted to reopen last week, so, yeah.
Aggie doesn't allow it.
There you go.
I mean, you can go to remote, but if you go, you're there for the year now.
One last thought. I wonder, and again, if the members don't want to take you up on it, that's fine, but I would certainly take you up on it. I wonder if there would be an opportunity in the end of February, early March, for us to come do a tour of all three schools and see what it's going to look like, and see your flow of traffic, your cafeteria, your classrooms, things like that. I, you know, frankly, it's been so long since I've been in the schools, what with COVID and, you know, having a crazy year. I'd love to just get an image of what it's going to look like for the kids to come back to school.
On a Saturday or a Sunday?
No, Ellen, not on a Saturday or Sunday.
Come on.
Maybe a Wednesday, when there's no kids in the building. We could, you know, arrange a couple of quick little tours of the buildings, if you guys would be up for it.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, if you don't mind pre-K and K-ing your way, we got that.
Sounds good.
Kira, any thoughts on the high school plan?
No, I think it's a really good plan, and I think that a lot of students have really been anticipating something like this. The one thing that I'd like to reiterate, that I think I mentioned last week, is that this is properly communicated to students. I know that, like, I know that I didn't have a lot of questions this meeting, but I think that a lot of students will have a bunch of other questions, and I just want to make sure that this is communicated properly to them.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you, Kira. So, we have other things in discussion, but I actually would love to, while this is fresh in our mind, move to a vote on these topics, and then we can just move on with the rest. Liz, you all right with that? So, the last thing I just want to mention real quick before we vote is, I saw on the news today that the CDC is actually going to release school reopening guidance, possibly as soon as this week. I would love at our meeting two weeks from now, if we could just spend some time talking about the impact of that report on your reopening plans. Did it alter your plans? Did it help you? Did it hinder you? Has anything changed from what we're talking tonight as a result of those plans? You know, I don't think we need to see the report to act tonight, but I think, you know, that'll be a part of your work, what that guidance is. So, I'd love to hear back about what that impact was when we meet again, so. All right. At this time, I would take a motion to transition from a hybrid learning model to an in-person learning model effective Monday, we're saying the 15th for Mitchell, March 15th, for educators and students, grades three to six, at the Gordon W. Mitchell School.
Contingent on
Contingent upon teacher vaccine being made available prior to the opening. Thank you, Amanda.
And all plans being weighed against the new CDC
Correct, thank you. And, yes, plans being weighed against new CDC guidelines.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
I would also take a motion to transition from a hybrid learning model to an in-person learning model effective Monday, March 15th, 2021, for educators and students, grades seven to 12, at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School, contingent upon teachers being able to be vaccinated prior to, and CDC guidance for reopening being weighed against reopening plans.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You will get us more concrete
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your hard work, and thank your teachers as well.
John, you have three minutes.
Two.
The clock is ticking.
First of all, I want to thank
Kate, Andrew, and Jeff, thank you so much for your time and your energy. I appreciate it. Liz, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Drive safely. It's snowy out.
Liz, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, it's okay. First of all, the principals did a great job. Gina, thank you for pulling that together and getting the slides up and ready to go. I think it was thoughtful. I think it showed the teachers, the principals are working together, getting a lot of information out in a quick manner, and going with the flow, because this is quick, and like you said, there's, it's fluid. It was funny about, when you're talking about the cafeteria, we're certainly not a restaurant, and we're going to follow CDC guidelines, we're working with our COVID officer, we're working with the guidelines that are going to put forth. The commissioner was asked point-blank last week in a meeting about transportation and the cafeteria.
Great.
And he said, I'm going as quickly as I can to move, and hopefully the CDC is listening to us. This is the only way we'll get them back. But John and I also, we have heard, we had the tents here in the spring, the fall, we're going to bring the tents back, and we can buy heaters or get some heaters out there and heat the tents, so the students can eat outside at all the locations, at all buildings, or even have, like we did in the fall with the, the band was outside and practicing, and so Mrs. Layton was at the Central School outside with her classes underneath a tent for a long time. And heaters can be brought in. No matter what, I think, what the plans are, what date it comes up, the school is here to support, I know that the committee is here to support, but the district is really here to support getting students back into some type of rituals and routines and regularity. And Dr. Williams, thank you very much. John, thank you for the support that you're giving to these principals over the last couple of days, you know, as they put these models together, the questions continue to come up of, can we get the support? You know, can we get more COVID monitors? Can we get more substitutes? Can we get more remote teachers? Can we utilize another room? Can we bring in more tents? And so, those things have been brought forward, and we're continuing to move our models and to make sure that we can get through these as quickly as possible.
Liz, I was very impressed with the amount of information they've pulled together in a week. You know, we got some emails the day after we voted last week about how there was really not a plan.
Yeah.
And I think rightfully so, parents were concerned about not really understanding what was going to happen. I feel 100 times better right now about what we have in front of us.
I think sometimes, I think people think, you know, we have one, one or two meetings a month, two meetings a month. We try to get a lot of information out.
Yep.
It's spotty at times when it comes out, because there's some things we can tell.
Yep.
There's some things that we don't have the information, or all of it gathered.
Yep.
We're still waiting on some information, whether it, you know, wherever that information's coming from.
Yep.
And we certainly want the principals and the teachers to drive the model.
Yep.
And as a district, from the superintendent's point of view, in our office, that we're going to make the decision that we want to reopen, and we want to bring kids back to school. At that point, the principals need to take that baton and go to their teachers and say, hey, listen, what does it look like to you? What does it feel like to you? How do we get them back in? And how do we do it thoughtfully, carefully, safely, and healthy for everybody? So, I think they did a nice job. I know they did a nice job, and Gina did a great job pulling them together and getting that information. As much as, they have that information, they're pulling it together and getting it all together, and then talking about it all day long.
Yeah, it was definitely key, having that definitive decision next week, that, you know, we're all going in the direction of the in-person. So, then it made the conversation much easier at the building level on that Wednesday to say, this is the direction we're going, we need people to work with us to get us in the best position to be ready. And that's when, you know, everybody got in the mindset of, this is, this is what we all are tasked to do, let's work together to make it the best for our particular building and our needs.
Sure.
And like you said, you know, they had that meeting on Wednesday, they met with their task force for a couple hours Thursday, a couple hours Friday. I pulled the principals back together on Monday, so they could share with each other what they were thinking, and to your point, Teresa, we didn't want any blindsiding of, oh, we didn't know that was an option for our building, so they were very aware of what was being decided in each of the buildings. And, you know, we're real thoughtful about whether it would work for them or not, and what's in the best interest of their students. They went back out to their task force, what is today, Tuesday, yesterday, and formulated it, and then the principals and I met today to put the slides together. So, it was a lot of work in a short amount of time, but I think what was needed is for everybody to understand what the goal was.
Yeah.
And once that was clear, everybody could work towards that goal.
As we all know, at best, 5% of our parents are watching this meeting right now. And so, in the next few days, the Facebook world will surely start taking our plans, and it'll, you know, it'll take a life of its own. I think it's really key that we get the message out as quickly as possible from the district on what the plan is and what
These are going to go up. These are
Can you put these up on the website?
We're going to start to put them up, and we'll, and
We'll add timelines.
And add timelines, and the principals have said, we need to go through the principals directly, you need to ask the questions directly.
Yep.
And we can continue to circulate this, and like I said before, sometimes we come across, we sound upset, or we sound eager, or angry, or, it's called passion. Educators have passion, regardless of where you are in the education line, if you're in a school district, wherever you are, whether you're driving the bus, figure it a little bit, or you're driving the bus as a superintendent, you're passionate about getting kids the best education possible, from the best teachers, the best administrators, and supporting them in our roles, the best that we can. And we saw tonight, three principals come up here, give a direct, given a directive from me, with Dr. Williams, put together a very thoughtful plan of getting their students back. And that's the passion that you see in our administrators in the East Bridgewater Public School District, and I think asking their teachers to be part of this program. I did reach out to Kurt Shippe, he is the EBEA Association President. I told, I asked him, I said, have your members become part of the solution and be with us to get students back. His answer was, absolutely, we are on board, we want to work together, let's make this happen. So, that's what it takes. It's called passion from both sides, administrative, faculty and staff, and getting this boat moving in the same direction, and just keep going further and further down the line. They did a nice job tonight.
Thank you, Liz, thank you. John, your time's up, I'm sorry.
He's got one thing.
Go ahead, John.
Am I on the budget or the surplus?
Surplus. He did the budget, he did a nice job. Didn't he do a nice job?
Yeah, he did a great
Well, I was just following the Well, we're going to get, I mean, if you want, why don't you give us like a three-minute breakdown of the budget conversation?
I think you could, I don't really have anything other to add than what you, what you said. I think we're in a good spot, we're ready to move forward, and I'm glad we're at this point, because it looks like I'm going to be spending the next three weeks on bussing,
next three weeks on busing, 60 hours.
That's it.
Okay. Yeah, we're in good shape. I was very happy with the numbers.
Listen, this has been all day here. We're, we're ready to go home, John.
Talk about surplus.
Be separated.
Uh, in your package is a listing of, uh, books at Central School. They're in storage. There's about a thousand books, uh, from 1979 to 2014. Um, we are not using them anymore. So I would love for you to make a motion to declare the listing of textbooks presented by the school business administrator as surplus property.
Some more.
Second.
I, I need the motion. I think someone else.
No, that's fine. Motion to declare this list of.
Textbooks.
Sorry, my brain stopped working.
Just take the whole, Tim, okay?
There's a motion to declare the list of books submitted as surplus. Moved by Teresa. Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, anything else, John?
I'm good.
Oh, dear. Gina, do you have any other updates for us?
Um, no. Just to, you know, keep in mind that even though a lot of our time is spent on COVID-related issues, there, the staff and administration is still going with, um, our curriculum review cycle. We'll be coming to at the end of the year with the piloting of ELA materials that have happened over the course of this year with seven through 12, as well as, uh, the arts, um, music, um, art, and, uh, some tech ed changes that we'll be, um, looking for for next year. Um, on a, a kindness note, uh, it, but February is Random Acts of Kindness. Central School's putting, spending lots of time this month on, uh, developing racksters in our Central School building. But I had a community member reach out to me, uh, wanting to remain anonymous, um, but would like to give a gift card donation once a month, um, to, uh, each of the schools to be given to a family in need. Um, so I thought, you know, a real heartfelt moment where this person has realized through the pandemic, there are lots of people struggling. And, you know, to know that there are people out there that care about them. Um, and, you know, although the donation is very generous, it's more about letting people know that, you know, there are random acts of kindness that are performed every day. And all we ask is that when they can, uh, they pay that random act of kindness back to someone else. So.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll teach that.
Moving on. Uh, I would take a motion, we're actually, action, action items. That wasn't English. We are on to action items. Uh, I would take a motion to, um, approve the school committee meeting minutes from the January 26th, 2021 meeting.
Some more.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve after-review accounts payable warrant 33 SV dated 210 2021.
Some more.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to, um, approve payroll warrant 32 PS dated 23 2021.
Some more.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we already acted on the surplus. And I would take a motion, uh, oh, Dr. Williams has a home education plan, which is approved by Dr. Williams. Superintendent LaGo recommends approval of the plan. I would take a motion to approve the home education plan for the attached student in our packet.
Some more.